Good morning, everybody. Please take your seats or run and get your coat and then take your seat. They're working on the heat, but it's not, it hasn't come through yet. So before you get too settled in, now that you're seated, is that if you have a, if there are primary and secondary individuals for the same seat here in the room, please sit together. That will facilitate some of the operations that we do as we determine quorum in the room. So if you have a secondary for your primary seats, sit together. If you don't know who they are, you have to figure that out, too.
Before I turn it over to the DDFO, I need to let you know that we do record these meetings, and there's also a transcript taken. Mike, would you please be the honors? I can do logistics now. Okay, so logistics here, there are a number of doors and exits if we need them. This is the primary here. The two in the back also lead if we, if we need to get out of here quickly. For today, alternates and primary members are all welcome to sit at the table. We don't yet have a packet signed, so when we get to action items, we will, we will deal with quorum issues at that point. As Jan said, if you and your, your primary and your alternate, if you are here together, we would dearly love you to sit next to each other. That makes counting quorum and some other things easier on us. Other logistics that I forgot.
Hey, good morning. Welcome to the November Hanford Advisory Board meeting. My name is Mike Burkhart. I am the Deputy Disputing Federal Officer for the Hanford Site. It's a fine for this meeting. We have to submit the Federal Advisory Committee Act. Advisory committees played an important role in shaping programs and policies of the federal government. The Hanford Advisory Board's role provides all level of presentations concerning EM site-specific issues such as activities in environmental restoration, waste and nuclear materials management and disposition, access facilities, future land use, the long-term stewardship, risk management, and communications and outreach. I appreciate your attendance today, and I look forward to the advisory and submission of constructive action policy level advice on Hanford.
Madam Chair. Good morning again. Please have a look at your name tent. And on your name tent, you will see that there have been apps on the face, the meeting ground rules, which mostly say, be polite, listen to one another, be respectful of another, don't spend a lot of time talking in sidebar conversations because it's distracting to other people in the room. And to mute yourself, that includes the people who may be online, you know, muting yourselves so that the sound doesn't come into the meeting. And also, of course, along with muting yourself, is making sure that you turn on the microphone when you have something to say, and the red light will come on when, when you activate your microphone, and then, you know, turn it off when you're finished. Questions?
If you are online with us and you would like to speak, let us know in chat. We've got a sign-in sheet here in the room. If you're in the room, please give us your autograph. If you are online, if you'd enter your name and your organization in the chat, that's our virtual sign-in sheet. It's also the way that folks online let us know that they wish to speak. I can actually mute everybody if something wonky happens, but only you can unmute yourself. So if you are online, it's the toggle on the little microphone signal symbol. If you are only on the phone, it is star six. And if you're in the room, you've got a microphone in front of you, and that also has an on and off button. With that, Madam Chair, would you like to review the agenda?
So I don't want to just read the agenda to you, but if you have a copy of the agenda in front of you, you will see that we have a busy and active day today. We're going to have a review of the tri-party agreement. The Department of Ecology is going to take on that topic and brief us on the tri-party agreement. There's a way in which this is a kind of continuation of your orientation to the HAB. Later on this morning, they're going to be talking about the RICRA Act. The ecology people are going to do a presentation on resource conservation and recovery act, the RICRA Act. There's going to be a hard break at 10:30, absolutely hard break. And then at 10:45, we'll begin again talking about the CIRCLA Act. Once again, one of the tri-party agencies, EPA, is going to handle that briefing for us. And then there is going to be an election for HAB Chair and HAB Vice Chair, those positions that are currently held by myself and Susan Coleman. Raise your hand, Susan. And then in the afternoon, election results, if we have the election, and more kind of orientation about the process of consensus on the Hanford Advisory Board. Later on this afternoon, we're going to have a kind of IM team led by the, by Chris Sutton, who is the IM team lead for the Budget and Contracts Committee, so that he can help us to understand how and why we give advice on budget priorities annually. And then later on this afternoon, draft, HAB drafted advice on cleanup priorities, a conversation led by Ruth Nicholson, our facilitator, Chris Sutton, and public comment if necessary and adjourning later on this afternoon. So are there any questions about the agenda for today? Thank you.
Hi. Mia.
Mia.
Yeah, I just have a question in terms of the packets and if there is going to be an election, if the packets haven't been approved, which I think I heard at the beginning of the meeting that they haven't been, can that be explained further? Or are we just hoping they're approved before the election time?
I'm going to kick that to Gary Younger because we are in the hope phase.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome. And I know that that's a topic that's on everybody's mind. And as of this moment, the packet has not been approved. However, my understanding, it is sitting at the last desk at EM Headquarters, waiting for one of the very senior executives to give a thumbs up. I have my phone here, and I am watching for a message from Headquarters saying that the packet is approved. In the meantime, we are going to continue on with this meeting as almost everything is informational. We have only one item that is listed for action, and we will deal with that when that comes up, and we'll, we'll, got a couple of potential scenarios, and we'll get to that when we get to that. In the meantime, let's learn.
Tom?
A quick clarifier. You said something about draft advice for cleanup priorities. Is that something that was in the meeting packet, or is that not drafted yet?
I'm sorry if I misled you. I read the word draft on there, but Chris Sutton is going to be leading a discussion about the annual drafted, you know, the draft advice for budget priorities, and so we will understand better later.
It's the setup to create it. Other questions about what we're going to do today? Right. Next up is adopt, adoption of the meeting minutes from June. We have, lest you think it looks a little sparse in the meeting room, there are 32 people online. So I, for me, it's a bigger, it's a bigger room. So there, there are a lot more people here than you physically can see.
Can we push, push the adoption to after the packets might be approved in the afternoon?
Yeah, we can, we can do that. Are there any announcements to make before we start in on our content? Ryan, are we ready to jump into the TPA and what it is and what it means? All right. Ecology is going to take the leadoff position today.
Okay, first, I'm going to do an introduction. Anna Grissel, are you ready to stand up? Anna Grissel Alvarez is a new staff member with us, and if I got it right, Ryan, she concentrates on our web content and social media. Is that right? We're really excited to have her. She's been doing a great job already.
Who, who are you? John?
Oh, yeah.
Who are you?
Okay, so I'm going to introduce myself now. So I'm John Price. I'm the tri-party agreement section manager for Ecology. I've been with Ecology a little over 22 years. I've been our lead on the tri-party agreement since 2009. So with that, I'll get into it. This really is an overview. When I do orientation on the TPA for our new Ecology employees, I take about an hour. And I know when DOE's contractor HMS does a training, I think they also take about an hour. So this really is an overview. And I also wanted to acknowledge, I did take at least a couple slides from HMIS. So I think the three parties really look at the TPA really pretty similarly. There's not a lot of different perspectives on it. So go ahead and go to the next slide. Okay, so the, the literal name of the tri-party agreement is the Hanford Federal Facility Agreement and Consent Order. And so I like to break that up between the, on both sides of the "and." So there's a federal facility agreement between the U.S. Department of Energy and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, so DOE and EPA. And then there's a consent order between USDAOE and the Department of Ecology. And because there's two different agreements, those have to get along. So a lot of times I call the TPA a get-along agreement because there's overlapping authorities and responsibilities. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So why is there an EPA-USDoe federal facility agreement? And I think Roberto may touch on this more later, I don't know. So in 1980, there was a law, the CIRCLA law was passed. We also call that Superfund. And for a federal facility like USDAOE, they have the authority and responsibility to request funding, which is really important, and then to do the work. For federal facilities, EPA has the authority to approve CIRCLA sampling plans and cleanup decisions. And that's really important because the sampling that's done determines how much cleanup is done and whether or not the cleanup has been done correctly. So it's really important to have some independent oversight on that. And so that's why EPA has a role, a big role, even though DOE is getting the funding and doing the work. When Superfund was initially passed, I suspect people didn't think federal facilities had a lot of uncontrolled hazardous waste problems and then, or a lot of, so, well, they didn't think maybe federal facilities had the same kind of problems as industries that had gone out of business or left a lot of waste piles. But then, lo and behold, it turns out that the Department of Energy and Department of Defense do have a lot of waste problems. And so in 1986, there were some amendments to the Superfund law that made it applicable to federal facilities, and that required EPA and the federal facilities to develop federal facility agreements. So that's why there's a DOE and EPA federal facility agreement. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So then, why is there an Ecology and USDAOE Consent Order? Well, we think of, we hear Hanford called a cleanup project. I think of it as a cleanup and waste management project. So the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act, which you'll hear about more later, was set up to manage hazardous waste from the time it was generated. That's the cradle or birth of hazardous waste to the time it was disposed of appropriately. That's the grave part of Cradle to Grave. And RICRA allows authorized state programs. Washington and almost every other state have an authorized state program, so they basically are carrying out a federal law through a state program. And just like Superfund, I think when RICRA was first passed, it wasn't thought that federal facilities had a whole lot of waste to deal with, and it was also not thought that RICRA was applicable to federal facilities. And then, lo and behold, people realized that there was a lot of waste, especially at Department of Energy facilities, and there was some litigation that confirmed that RICRA is applicable to federal facilities. So in 1992, the Federal Facility Compliance Act was passed and really kind of set up a structure for managing waste at federal facilities. Although, if you know that the TPA was signed in 1989, we were really ahead of the curve here at Hanford by setting up a program to deal with waste at a federal facility. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So some, some key things to remember about the TPA is it's a way to get into compliance with CIRCLA and RICRA. And it establishes responsibilities on the part of the Department of Energy for reporting progress to the, to regulatory agencies, establishes ways to do changes to the agreement, especially the schedules, and establishes requirements for doing public involvement. And really, really important, it provides a basis for budgeting. So the tri-party agreement's schedules establish how much money the Department of Energy should request each and every year to do the milestone work that is in the TPA. The Department of Energy, besides having CIRCLA authority, also has huge authority under the Atomic Energy Act to manage radioactive materials and nuclear materials. And so one of the, the key parts of the TPA is it reserves certain rights for DOE and also has ways for them to dispute decisions by EPA or Ecology if they don't think those are the right decisions. And then just a couple other bullets there is about how it's interpreted. So really, you read it very literally when you're, you're interpreting the TPA. Go ahead and go to the next slide. There's actually a lot of work that starts out in the TPA that ends up not being in the TPA. And pretty typically, that happens when Ecology issues an order to the Department of Energy. And right now, I think we have a couple, I think we have three or more orders or consent decrees or settlements that are outside the TPA. So typically, when, when Ecology believes that DOE is not complying with some requirements or some schedules, either regulations of the TPA will issue an order which DOE can appeal. And then if we reach a settlement, we end up managing work that's outside the TPA in conjunction with the TPA. So, for example, when DOE does monthly reporting to Ecology and EPA, they will report progress both against TPA requirements and also against the requirements and schedules in those other legal mechanisms. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So this describes the structure of the TPA. So you see three main parts there, the legal agreement, Attachment 1, and Attachment 2. Most of our staff, I think, don't use the legal agreement very much. And that's pretty specialized stuff and gets into things like enforcement of requirements and disputes and things like that. And I've never used Attachment 1. It was something that was done back in the TPA, was signed and is still in the TPA, but just isn't anything we use. Attachment 2 is what I think of as being where the action is. I guess that's why it's called the Action Plan. So it has a lot of procedural requirements in it about how, for example, documents are reviewed when the Department of Energy prepares a plan or prepares a report, has deadlines for EPA and Ecology to review those documents, and has deadlines for the Department of Energy to respond to our review comments and finalize the documents when we turn in those, those documents. And a couple other things it has in there that are really important. It has a list of the individual locations at Hanford that need to be cleaned up. We've tracked about 3,800, actually a little more than 3,800 individual locations where waste has been spilled, leaked, or intentionally disposed of. So the ones that still remain to go are listed in the, the back of the TPA Action Plan in one of the appendices. And it also includes an appendix with the, the milestones in it, the schedules for DOE to do work. Okay, go ahead and go to the next slide. So we've got two regulatory agencies at Hanford, which is a little bit different than a lot of places. Originally, the Hanford Site was kind of split up on a geographic basis or somewhat on regulatory authority. So it was split up to give Ecology more of the locations where waste was managed and give EPA more of the locations where there was cleanup work to do. And then we've kind of mixed and matched those over the years. So anything that needs to be done at Hanford, there should be a lead regulatory agency so that DOE doesn't have to deal with dual regulation, which is kind of confusing and difficult to deal with. But we do have a few of the milestones that are a dual regulatory lead because both EPA and Ecology have pretty strong interest in the work. So Ecology and EPA decide between ourselves which one of us will be the lead agency for any of the, the milestone work in the TPA. And then we do keep each other informed when we're the lead regulatory agency. So we consult with EPA when Ecology is the lead and vice versa. And we actually have a memorandum of understanding between EPA and Ecology that kind of has some rules of the road about how we involve each other when we're the lead regulatory agency. And then even though we've divided up the work, we do have specific legal authorities and responsibilities that we don't give away when we designate a lead regulatory agency. So a lot of the, a lot of this is, means that we have to have a get-along agreement, which is what the TPA is. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So I've mentioned milestones a few times. There's three types of milestones, major milestones, interim milestones, and target dates, which actually aren't milestones since they're dates, not milestones. So you can think of a major milestone as a large chunk of work. And so I think there's about 15 really big projects at Hanford that get major milestones. And those chunks of work can cost anywhere from a billion dollars up to $50 billion. So those are, those are really big projects. Those are, those typically take many years to complete. So they are broken up into interim milestones, and interim milestones are supposed to occur about every year, but we set them every few years at least. And those are intended to make sure we can track DOE's progress and, and ensure that they're on schedule to complete the major chunk of work that the major milestone governs. And then target dates are things that we use sometimes just as extra schedule trackers. So maybe we look at a chunk of work and, and don't think it needs an enforceable milestone, but we still want DOE to work towards a specific date for a part of the work, then we'll establish a target date. Okay, go ahead and go to the next slide. So we've made lots of changes to TPA milestones over the years. I didn't go and look up the number. I know we've made over 800 changes to milestones since 1989, and there's rules in the TPA about how we do that. The reasons we change milestones is DOE may be about to miss or has missed a scheduled milestone, and that can be caused either by DOE, or it could be caused by EPA or Ecology. So whatever the reason, we, we do change milestones when there's a delay. Something that happens pretty much every year, has in the past, is Congress will appropriate less money that is needed to do all of the TPA milestone work for a given year. And so when that happens, we will negotiate changes to milestones. And then there's also a provision to change milestones when things happen that are out of DOE's control. We call that force majeure. So really, current example is the impacts to work conditions by COVID. So that's, you know, caused DOE a lot of difficulties, you know, both with the workforce locally, and it can also cause, you know, concerns with suppliers that, that DOE needs to depend on. There's other factors that can be considered force majeure, like a natural disaster or a supplier shortage. Those, DOE can cite those as a reason to change a deadline. And we also create new schedules, and that can happen when DOE writes a plan to do work. So we want to have a schedule for that plan to do work, and so we would create new milestones for that. And sometimes we recognize new work that we hadn't thought of before, and so we would come up with milestones for that. As you may know, significant TPA changes are subject to public comment, and in the past, we frequently gotten, have advice on those TPA changes. And I think that's it. That's a really quick overview, so I don't know if this is when you want me to take questions or not.
For those, so Lacey's going to keep the queue. For those of you who are new, the queue is our code for the line of people who want to jump in and ask questions and speak. So if you're in the room, you can see there some of our folks are putting their name tents up on their side. That's the signal for I want to talk. If you are online, I see Rob has, has requested to speak. If you're online, let us know in the chat that you want in on the questions. Before we go to questions, our habit here at the HAB is to check in with the other two TPA agencies before we open it to questions. So we'll check in with DOE and EPA on this topic. Mike, do we have someone from DOE with perspective?
No, we don't. Just like to thank you, John, for that informative presentation. Appreciate it very much.
Yeah, it's, it's a check-in that we do. They don't have to say anything, but we check in. Roberto, do you have anything to add to the TPA discussion?
No, nothing more to add on. I think that was a really great presentation. Thanks, John.
All right. We've got a queue. Lacey, we've got Rob Carmley, Dan Solitz, Steve Anderson, and Esteban. If you want to speak, let us know in chat or let us know in the room. Rob, you're up.
Hello. I think I'm on. Can you hear me okay? Where is it documented? Who is the lead agency for a particular project?
Yeah, so if you go back into the appendices, the action plan, each of the milestones that's in the back, it's Appendix D of the TPA lists the lead regulatory agency. And then there's another appendix called Appendix C, and I talked about the individual locations where waste has been spilled, leaked, or disposed of. And those individual locations are grouped into what we call operable units. And each of the operable units also has a listing in Appendix C of who the lead regulatory agency is.
All right, thank you.
Dan Solitz.
Thank you. Thank you, and good morning. You kind of got to start on a question that I had, the relationship between the operable units. You talked about 3,800 locations and the action plans and the milestones. How, how is, how is all of that organized? Suppose, say, I took an interest in, in the, in the sodium stored at the Fast Flux Test Facility. How would that, that be sorted out with the action plan, the locations, the milestones? This is, this is an example. Maybe you've got a more clear example of that, that you don't have to use that one.
Yeah, I don't know quite how to answer. I'll take a stab at it. So I don't believe that we have a milestone for the sodium at the Fast Flux Test Facility yet. There is a milestone for what we call Hanford Bulk Sodium, which is some sodium stored elsewhere on the Hanford Site. So you could go into TPA Appendix D, and if you look through there, or if you got, knew somebody that knew the milestone number, you could find that eventually. I think it's about, I don't know, it's probably 30 pages to look through, and you could just kind of go through those pages until you saw sodium, and you go, aha, there's the sodium. So that's, that's how it's organized. So sodium would be a project, for example.
Okay, so if I did that, would I then find out which operable unit it was part of and what, what milestone was associated with it?
Yeah, you might need a little bit of help with that. So, you know, there's, there's milestones for things that are not
So, yeah, there's, there's milestones for things that are not operable units. So managing waste is not, is not done by operable units. An operable unit would really be a grouping of these individual locations where waste has been leaked, spilled, or disposed of. And in some cases for buildings. So the Purx plant, for example, has a milestone associated with it. I'm not, not sure I'm doing a great job.
Well, so you've got these 3,800 locations and, and you've got each one is an operable unit?
Those are grouped into operable units. So you might, of those 3,800 locations, you might have, you know, 20, even 50 of those grouped into an operable unit. And then there would be a schedule for that operable unit to be worked on.
Okay, and then, and then, and then the milestone, well, how does that play into this schedule?
The schedule is the milestone. Schedule and milestone, those, those terms can be used interchangeably.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks. It's a lot clearer now, for me, anyway.
All right, Steve Anderson.
Morning, everyone, and thanks for the information. I really appreciate it. I was just wondering, are there any currently, just maybe a brief summary of any TPA changes that you're looking at? Now?
Yeah, so we just completed, I'd say just probably a couple of months ago, completed public comment on some changes for milestones for cleanup in the central plateau. We're still working on a response to those public comments and then we'll issue the final milestones for that. I think we'll have some more changes coming up fairly soon. As you may know, we, the tri-parties have been talking about tank waste for several years now. And if we do reach an agreement on the negotiations we're in, I would anticipate we're going to have some pretty extensive new and changed milestones, and we'll do public comment on that. I also think we'll have some more milestones coming up supporting the RECA permit that Ecology is working on. So we don't have any, as far as I know, Roberto, I don't think we have any out for public comment right now, but that's probably the list of things I can think of.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So we've got six people in queue. Excuse me. Esteban, and then Chris Sutton, you're next. Esteban?
Yes, thank you, Ruth, and greetings from Houston. And one of the big topics, and now that I've been traveling the country, that keeps coming up is you guys at Hanford are pretty well-funded. You know, that's the, the comment, especially right now, I'm finished working on some congressional elections. And like, I think the big thing that, for me, popped up to me and the big thing that keeps popping up here is milestones. We know congressional budgets switch over time and it's, you're never going to get what you want, you know? So the big thing for me, I think, and the biggest thing, I think, when I joined this board was, how are we even expected to get work done and everything happening when milestones keeps changing? And I think right now, I don't know, it was Chris or who, or who brought it up that I think, who's the people that are really in charge? So my biggest question is, and the question to this, to the people is regarding to the tri-party agreement is, when is, when these milestones are said to change, who is really in charge of it and who's really, you know, who's the accountability to? Especially because, you know, I think a lot of this technology is kind of new and who, who's the person that we need to talk to, especially when it comes, like me, that I occupy a public seat when it comes to have a public meeting, right? Basically just that, you know, who's, how do you kind of determine that, the milestones and the whole accountability perspective?
Yeah, I guess I would say that the tri-parties are jointly responsible or accountable. You know, DOE is certainly accountable to get the work done. Ecology and EPA are accountable as regulatory agencies to, you know, hold DOE accountable to meeting their schedules. So, you know, I think you can, you can ask any of us at any time, you know, why isn't the work progressing faster? Or, you know, if you have any concerns about the schedule of an individual project, I think we're all jointly accountable. You want to comment on that, Roberto, or?
I mean, there's nothing really more to add on. I think you addressed that pretty adequately. Yeah.
All right, so I've got, oh, okay. Chris Sutton and then David Replag. Chris?
Yeah, I guess this is jointly for both Roberto and John. On the central plateau, there are a large number of RECA groundwater monitoring units, and these are also in CIRCLA operable units. And the groundwater monitoring units can have very different sampling and analysis requirements than the CIRCLA operable units, depending on what the contaminants of concern are. So is it possible to have something cleaned up under CIRCLA where you meet all the rod requirements for, for cleanup levels and yet not be cleaned up under RECA? And if so, how would that happen? Because I don't think we've run into this situation yet because the nearest we've come to cleaning up operable units are along the river, whereas my question is addressed more to both RECA and CIRCLA groundwater units on the central plateau.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a stab at that and then see if Roberto wants to chime in. So when the CIRCLA work is done, one, one of the things CIRCLA has to look at is other laws and rules that are applicable or relevant and appropriate. That's a term in CIRCLA. So the RECA requirements that you're referring to are looked at when CIRCLA records a decision are signed. So typically, the CIRCLA rods are trying to meet the RECA requirements.
Yeah, and from my understanding, that's exactly what John had said. There are the AORs, the Applicable and Relevant Requirements. Those are what need to be met when it comes to the RECA decision.
Right, I guess what I'm really concerned about is in a RECA groundwater monitoring unit, and this gets kind of down the weeds a little bit, and I apologize for that. But you look at certain monitoring, you monitor for certain, for certain species, and you look at up gradient and down gradient. And my question is really, if you clean up under CIRCLA, what do you do if you still have a situation where your down gradient water quality parameters are higher than your up gradient around the RECA unit?
Yeah, that's pretty far down the weeds, but I'll try and do a concise answer. So I, I think in that situation, the CIRCLA cleanup would probably continue, or you would go into the, the RECA decision-making framework and try and come up with some alternative requirements. And there's some ways to do that in RECA. And I'd be glad to talk to you about that offline because that's, that's kind of a down in the weeds question, as you said.
So the next two presentations, one is on RICRA specifically and the other is on CIRCLA specifically. So there, there may be some pieces of that that help answer some of your questions as well. Madam Chair, we've got about a minute before we want to transition to RICRA, and I've got six people in the queue wanting to speak. What would you like to do? Would you like to stay with the queue for a little bit or move on to the presentations and keep the queue for the next set of Q and A?
Well, it seems to me that the big problem is whether we'll be through the various, the various presentations before the hard stop at 10:30, right?
Yeah.
So I'll leave you to kind of parse that.
Ryan, you have a recommendation? Go for more questions. Okay. David Replag and then Alfonso. David?
Yeah, I think I have a couple just quick questions. My first question was, under RECA, you mentioned that it allows authorized state programs. And my question was, who authorizes? I think, looking forward to the next presentation, I think it says EPA is the authorizing agency for the state programs. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Ecology has to turn in an authorization package, and I think that's renewed every several years. I don't know the exact period of time that's done, but, but EPA looks at us periodically to make sure we're doing things according to the way they think they should be done.
Okay. Then the second question, you mentioned earlier that there were 3,800 individual locations identified. Was that at the time of the signing of the TPA? And then do you know about what the number is now?
No, that's the current number.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's grown over the years. We've kept looking for things and kept finding things. I, I think we've probably found 99% of the things that are out there to find.
Okay, thank you.
Alfonso, and then I want to check in with the folks on the phone. Hug that mic.
There we go. Quick question. I just was asked, going to ask about the 3,800 locations. What type of barriers are they in?
Well, a lot of those still remain to be cleaned up, so they're not in barriers.
Okay, now, I'm not asking about barriers, I'm asking about areas. Are they?
Oh, areas.
Within buildings, are they out in land, are they?
So most of the river corridor, along, the area along the Columbia River has been cleaned up already, and it did not have as many of those locations to start with. DOE is just really cleaning up at the 100K area mostly now. So most of those locations are in the 10 square miles in the center of Hanford.
Thank you.
All right. We've got 40 people online and three of them are on the phone. So I want to check in with our three phone people. Do any of you have a question you want to ask? It's hard for the phone people to let me know if they will have a question. Um, where are we? Rob Davis and then Tom Galliotto. Rob?
Hi, good presentation. But I, I have two comments to make. And the biggest one is, is that when we entered this TPA change package last spring, okay? And we had asked about the information. We had asked several times for the information about it. We kept getting told it's embargoed, we can't know it. We don't know what each side is arguing. I would find it a lot better if that we could get some highlight lists of what those points are and the points of contention between the parties to, to better understand where we're at. So, and, and really what I was gearing my question of, what is the timetable for something like this? Can, can a TPA package change in six months? Can it change in a year? Can it change in? How, how long is this period of time usually drawn out where you go through the negotiations with all the parties?
Yeah, I'll give you the range of things. So I, I think I've been involved in some negotiations that go really quick, like, you know, within a few weeks. And in other cases, like the tank waste negotiations that we're in now, we've been actively negotiating since October of 2019. So it's long and drawn out with lots of back and forth.
And, and we can't know what the issues are? Or can you summarize some of those issues at some time? I mean, not necessarily now, but I mean, I'd like to be, understand what those issues are. I don't like to be told, we can't tell you. Wait. And, and that's kind of frustrating.
Yeah, so I have a couple of thoughts for you. On the tank waste negotiations we're in now, I've been referring people back to Director Bellin's letter from May of 2019 because it lays out the things that we are negotiating about. We don't talk about what's going on in negotiations while we're negotiating. And, you know, the, the reason I, I give for that is there's a lot of twists and turns and it would be really a lot of work to inform everybody of all those twists and turns as we're going. And, you know, I think if people weren't really paying attention to them, and, and when I negotiate, I'm, you know, sometimes full-time on it. So if you're not following it that closely, it might be, might be hard to track all that. But that's one thought. On the other hand, you know, I've, I've talked with Ryan and also with the other tri-parties, and I think we need, we do need to do a better job of getting information out as we're entering into negotiations. Maybe not getting down into the details, but giving folks some kind of information that they can, you know, give some feedback on.
Okay. The other comment I was just going to make to the idea on the budget is that, you know, we're talking about completely transforming our entire electric grid in 10 years. And we can't start up our level waste plant until 2036? Something's wrong. Something is wrong. Thanks.
All right, we're going to wrap up the Q and A with our last two folks. It's Tom and Tom. Galliotto and then Cecilia. Tom Galliotto.
Thanks, Ruth. Question to John, John Price. When DOE comes to Ecology with a case for delaying a particular milestone, how does Ecology go about vetting that request? And in particular, funding availability is the reason for not accomplishing a milestone? What are Ecology's options for proceeding to agree or disagree with that request?
Yes, so when DOE comes to Ecology with a change, or EPA, we would typically ask them for their new schedule. And then we would go through that new schedule, looking at the details and see if it makes sense or not. You know, as far as the reason for the change, other than, other than budget, it's, it's usually pretty easy to see the reason for the change and agree to it. Our options, if we don't agree with the change, is we can go to enforcing the existing milestones so we can basically just disagree with the change. And that's what I talked about in one of the slides where things actually go outside the TPA when Ecology issues an order for DOE to work. And that's something that could happen when we don't agree with their basis for a change.
Okay, so as far, if, if the case was funding availability, do you have any options at all to address that? Or do you have to just automatically approve that?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts on that. So Ecology can certainly order to DOE to do work. We cannot order the US Congress to fund that work. So if we do order DOE to do a particular piece of work, they may elect to do, not to do some other work. So that's something that has to go into the thinking when we do negotiations or actually go to enforcing requirements.
Thank you.
All right, last question. Tom, Cecilia.
Hi. One comment that, want to bring it back to the HAB. If we're being asked to consider advice on milestones, remember that fast advice takes three or four months. So letting us know sooner than later is better. I wanted to ask, though, where the HAB fits into the TPA?
Yeah, I'll take a stab at this. Feel free to chime in, Roberto. So the, the tri-party agreement calls out the need for public involvement. And there is a public involvement plan that's called out by the TPA, and that public involvement plan refers to the HAB.
And, and, and adding on to that, Superfund sites typically are, are, as part of the public involvement process, are required to have this community advisory board. And in the case of Hanford, it's otherwise known as the Hanford Advisory Board.
Thank you.
All right. So Hint, when you're done asking your question in the room, put your name card down or we get confused. So I believe, Ryan, we have Annette Carlson with us to talk about RICRA.
Hi, I'm Annette Carlson. I'm here to talk about RICRA. Is, as you said, I am the permitting project manager for the Nuclear Waste Program. I've worked for Ecology for 15 years, and before that, I worked as a Hanford contractor for a number of years. Next slide. So Washington State's authority to regulate dangerous waste at Hanford, we get that authority from EPA, and somebody mentioned that earlier. EPA may authorize states to administer and enforce a state hazardous waste management program. EPA actually has two offices. One is in Seattle. We work with them very closely. That's responsible for RECA issues. EPA also has a Hanford site office that works with the Comprehensive Environmental Response, Compensation and Liability Act, or CIRCLA. And those issues are through the tri-party agreement, and John talked about that earlier. The state's authority is equivalent to a federal program. And as I said, we work very closely with EPA and regulatory issues and decisions. They maintain an oversight role, and we just really appreciate their involvement and their guidance as we work through new permit applications, permit renewals, and permit modifications. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So, what does ecology regulate? Well, we regulate dangerous waste through the Washington Administrative Code 173303, and the State Hazardous Waste Management Act. We regulate dangerous waste and dangerous waste components of mixed waste. We have requirements for the treatment, storage, and disposal of dangerous and mixed waste at Hanford, and we're responsible for the protection of human health and the environment. So, what we don't regulate is radioactive materials and radioactive waste, and that's managed exclusively by the US Department of Energy. So, I'm just mentioning this here, we have other state permits at Hanford. We have the air operating permit and the water permits. I'm not gonna talk about those today, I just want to mention those, that we do manage those at the Nuclear Waste Program. So, I know John talked a lot about the tri-party agreement earlier. I'm just mentioning the tie-in with RICRA permitting. Ecology, EPA, and DOE signed a legally binding tri-party agreement and consent order in 1989. And as John talked about, milestones were developed to support RICRA and CIRCLA cleanup. So, the Hanford site-wide permit was initially started through permit application material that was submitted through TPA milestones. So, that's kind of our tie-in with the TPA. And not all the facilities and dangerous waste management units were included in the first Hanford site-wide permit. And I just want to share, you know, if you go out to our ecology site, our ecology website, and you look at the Hanford site-wide permit, and you look at the parts ones and twos, conditions in the permit, it shows all the different facilities and areas that were brought into the Hanford site-wide permit, and then closed out, or the ones that are active currently. Next slide, please. So, the Hanford site-wide permit history, we first issued the Hanford site-wide permit in 1994. Currently, the permities are operating under Revision 8C, where we have 22 units in this revision. And so, the Hanford site-wide permit is made up of what we call the upfront material, the permit conditions, and attachments, as well as operating unit groups, corrective action unit groups, closing unit groups, and post-closure unit groups. And if you, I don't know, some may remember this, some may not know, that we transmitted a renewal for the Hanford site-wide permit called Revision 9 in 2012. We had 37 unit groups in the renewed permit. This includes some of the unit groups that are considered interim status at this time, meaning we don't have full permit application material. And so, we're hoping to bring in all of those interim status units into the renewal. So, we received a lot of comments in the, can you mind being back? Thank you. Sorry, I just took a quick pause. So, when we put the REV 9 out for public review in 2012, we received over 5,000 comments. And so, we're actively working on the revised renewal, and that will go out in 2024. And for that renewal, there'll be approximately 38 unit groups. And just to give you a little explanation and the difference of the number, it's that Revision 8C that's currently, the permities are working toward, that we've had since 2012, we've had unit groups that have been closed out of 8C, and some that have been brought in. So, 8C is actively modifying. So, we needed to take into account all the unit groups that would be included in this revised renewal. Next slide, please. So, I also wanted to mention our hazardous waste and toxics reduction program. So, they are really our lead program in ecology, who guide and support us in permitting. They have been instrumental in working with us for the REV 9 renewal, as well as new permit applications or permit modifications. They also maintain a memorandum of understanding with EPA, in which we keep EPA informed and involved of our decisions and any issues that need resolving. Next slide, please. So, I talked a little bit about how we work with EPA Region 10, and how we keep them informed and involved. But we also work with the Attorney General's Office, who provide legal advice on permitting issues and decisions. Next slide. Thank you. So, I talked a lot about the Hanford site-wide permit, but I'll also talk about non-Hanford permits. PermaFix is one of them. It's a waste storage and treatment facility specializing in treating low-level and mixed-low-level waste. We regulate the mixed waste stored and treated at the facility, consisting of waste from Hanford, as well as in-state and out-of-state mixed waste generators. PermaFix is going through a renewal, and so that will be provided for public review at some point. I don't have the exact date today, or I would provide it, but I know you would receive that information at the appropriate time. The Puget Sound Naval Shipyard just went through a renewal. We oversee the permit for the storage of dangerous and mixed waste of the US Navy's Puget Sound Naval Shipyard in Birmingham. The shipyard is home port for active and inactive vessels. They're used to maintain overhaul, decommission, and dismantle vessels. So, they just went through a renewal, as I said, their permit is up to date. And it, on the ecology website, you can also look at information on PermaFix and Puget Sound Naval Shipyard. Next slide. Okay, I just provided a really high-level presentation on RICRA permitting at the Nuclear Waste Program. If you all have any questions, I figure at some point we'll want to talk to you about the REV 9 renewal, but I'm happy to take questions, if that's appropriate.
Let's check in with EPA and DOE, and then we'll move to questions. DOE?
Okay, so I'll introduce myself first. My name is Wes Boyd. I work for the Environmental Compliance Division for DOE Hanford. And I've been in that position for about a year. Prior to that, I spent about, I've spent about 10 years, or eight years onsite at, working for DOE at Hanford. But the Environmental Compliance Division at Hanford has a staff of 18, which includes 11 federal employees and seven contractor support employees. DOE is the owner of the facilities, which are operated by our contractors, and as such, we both bear responsibility for compliance with environmental regulations. We work closely with our counterparts at ecology to ensure compliance is maintained. We also actively work with ecology and our prime contractors to ensure permits and permit modifications are submitted and completed in a timely manner. And we really do appreciate the support and the work that's done by ecology to complete the requested permitting activities, so that we can continue to operate our facilities in a safe and compliant manner, which is protective of our workers and the environment.
Thank you. EPA, do you have anything to add?
Hi, no, nothing else to add on, except I also wanted to note that we do have other satellite offices that work under CIRCLA over in Portland and Alaska. But other than that, that was a great presentation.
All right, we've got four people in queue. Before we jump in, I want to check, we've got three people on the phone. Do any of you want to ask a question or add a comment? Folks on the phone? All right, just so you know, we've got 37 people online, so there's more than just in the room. Jeff Wyatt, lead us off.
Thank you, Annette, for the, for the presentation. Could you clarify for us the definition of mixed and radioactive waste, and who is responsible for regulating these different kinds of waste? And one example is the cesium capsules. Who regulates the handling and disposal of those? Thank you.
Boy, so I hope I can answer your question correctly. So, I believe we have a unit group that does manage the cesium capsules. You know, I don't work with that specifically, but I
Annette, do you want me to?
Sure, Stephanie worked on that, I know, so let Stephanie answer that.
Stephanie, would you introduce yourself as well?
Sure, I'm happy to. So, I'm Stephanie Schleif, I'm with Washington State Department of Ecology. I'm the deputy program manager, and I also manage RICRA permitting. So, Annette reports to me, Annette being our site-wide RICRA expert. So, we do have a unit, as Annette was referring to, we call it a unit group in the current Hanford site-wide dangerous waste permit called the Waste Encapsulation Storage Facility, or WESF. And the cesium and strontium capsules are stored in pool cells, and those are regulated by that permit. And then, there is also another unit called the capsule storage area that is built, and Department of Energy, Wes might be able to speak to this too, but it is also permitted. It's covered under the permit, and that's where those capsules will be transferred to eventually. And as Annette mentioned earlier, those are a mixed waste, but we regulate just the dangerous waste portion. The radioactive component is regulated by the Department of Energy. So, I don't know if that wholly answered your question, but that speaks to just the capsules themselves.
I guess, you know, maybe I'm a little bit confused about how the Department of Energy regulates radioactive materials, and how that works with the other agencies in the TPA.
Right. So, we are gonna have a presentation after the break around Superfund and CIRCLA, and that, that may help paint a more complete picture for you. So, save the question and ask it again. Okay, I've got Richard Bloom, and then Rob Parmley. Richard?
Yes, I have the hard question of the day. You know, Steve Wigman, our former chair, he related that the biggest mistake ever made was to bring the single-shell tanks into the RICRA permit. You know, I've worked tank farms regulatorily. I guess my question out there is, there is no way single-shell tanks or the interface piping that's associated with it can be Part B permitted. I mean, it can't be compliant. I guess, and, I guess, what is the benefit for it being in the RICRA permit, rather than being addressed more globally as a CIRCLA cleanup action?
So, I, you know, I'll just say that I don't have a lot of background as to why single-shell tanks were decided
I can tell you exactly why.
Okay.
I mean, I've been on-site for, since 1980. And basically, the rule was that once, you know, in, when DOE finally agreed to come under regulation at, under RICRA, they went back to see if waste had been transferred in the tanks. And one of the, you know, there was some transfers that occurred prior to 1986, when the DOE finally gave up and decided to become part of the RICRA. And so, there was a waste movement in some of the tanks, not all the tanks. Many of them hadn't been touched in years. But, you know, it's, they're leaking, the stuff on the outside. I mean, it is a regulatory nightmare, and I can tell you, being looked at regulatory, it is much better to be addressed under CIRCLA than under RICRA. And, but my, my real question comes down to is, do you see an actual compliant Part B permit for single-shell tanks? I mean, it's bad enough for the double-shell tanks.
So, I'll just say, we are actively working on a Part B permit application for single-shell tanks. And, you know, I just, I want you to know that I do hear your concern, but we are actively bringing in the single-shell tanks into the RICRA permit. It was included in the renewal in 2012. But I just want you to know that I do hear your concern.
All right, I've got two people in queue. Rob, you're up.
Yeah, I think I might be duplicating something that Jeff brought up, because I, I'm also interested in, with mixed waste, that has hazardous stuff and radioactive stuff included in, in the same, in the same volume, how you have two different regulatory agencies trying to control that, that, that stuff? Is, and are you gonna cover that later on?
Roberto, is that, is that part of yours, or Stephanie, Annette?
I'll try to answer, and certainly if anyone else would like to jump in, that's, that's great. I'll just say, when we look at a permit application, or we look at permit modifications, and there are waste components that are radioactive in nature, we are very careful to not overstep our authority, and, and to, and we respect DOE's authority to manage that waste. I mean, those are part of our conversations when we review a permit application or a permit modification. So, I didn't know if, if anyone else wanted to add to that, but I'll just share, that's, that's my experience.
Yeah, and adding that, adding on to that real, real quick, and although I'm not sure I fully understood the question in the presentation that I'll be giving later on, I will explain a little bit in detail of how CIRCLA responds to certain hazardous substances, and any threatened leaks or immediate leaks.
I look forward to that.
Pam, thank you for waiting.
Thank you. So, I was interested to hear that the, the process to renew the, the permit started 10 years ago. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the HAB worked really hard on advice. I mean, it was a really challenging process, and something so complicated. And my question is, that was submitted probably nine or 10 years ago, I'm not sure. Do you, as you were resolving the issues in the, the new permit, do you look at the HAB advice? Did what we suggested make any difference? Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. I appreciate that question. I know it's taken 10 years, and I just want you to know, we've been working diligently on the revised renewal since 2012. We've been working with EPA and DOE and the Hanford Contractors in workshops. You know, it's, it's hard to explain why it has taken so long, but the best way I can explain it is, we want you to know that we heard you. We received 5,000 comments from members of the public, tribal nations, from DOE and Hanford contractors. We want you to know that we're incorporating those comments in our workshops. We are touching every unit group and every document within the Hanford site-wide permit. And we're doing that while we are actively modifying 8C. And there have been priorities in 8C, such as direct feed, low-activity waste operations, as well as bringing in new unit groups and closing out unit groups from the Hanford permit. But we have been working very hard, and yes, we absolutely have been taking your advice in our workshops. We include that in our discussions.
Are there other questions or comments? Anyone? So, the plan is, we know that the ecology folks have other commitments, which is why the 10:30 break is, is a hard stop, so they can make their other commitments today. Do the agencies want to add anything? We're, we're running a little early. Madam Chair, would you like to take an early break?
It's always nice to take a break after you've been sitting for an hour or so.
Yeah.
Perhaps we, we could Perhaps we could either do that or start talking about the election. Have you heard anything from headquarters, Gary? All right then, we could think about taking a break and coming back perhaps a little bit early, I don't know.
Roberto, could EPA adjust and start its presentation 15 minutes early?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could. Okay. So let's take a break until 10:30, and we will ask if we can warm up the room a little.
Yeah.
If you'd please take your seats, we'll get started.
For those online, over the break, we muted everybody. So if you are online, and when you get in queue, you will need to unmute yourself on your computer. Look for the little microphone icon. If you are on the phone, when we get to Q and A, if you want to unmute yourself and you are only on the phone, the thing you need to know is star six. Only you can unmute yourself. I cannot unmute you. And if you're in the meeting room, it's the little red light on your microphone. Let me pull up.
I know.
Okay. So we started the morning talking about the tri-party agreement, the TPA. That may be the most used acronym in HAB land after HAB. And we went into RICRA, which is largely the purview of the Department of Ecology. And now we're going to talk about CIRCLA or Superfund with EPA. Roberto, are you ready to go?
Yes. All right. I don't know if anyone, if anyone else is as cold as I am right now. But I'm a little shivering at the moment.
Roberto, could, could you introduce yourself? Just because I know we've got new folks who don't have the cast of characters yet.
Yeah. So my name is Roberto Almiro. I am one of the remedial project managers over at the Hanford Project Office in the federal building right across the street. I am also one of the volunteer public involvement officers for my office, along with Jeff Schram, who can be here with us today. Yeah, I've been with EPA for just shy of two years, starting next month. Yeah, my work primarily focuses on Hanford. Shall I get started?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So the main objective for, sorry, can you go to the next slide? So the main objective for the presentation is to provide an introduction to the cleanup actions regulated by the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the Comprehensive Environmental Response, Compensation and Liability Act, otherwise known as CIRCLA. Following the session, I hope to be able to give you all an understanding of the purpose of CIRCLA and the national priorities list. Explain, be able to explain how a federal facilities agreement, in this case Hanford, TPA, identifies the agency roles and responsibilities for the cleanup. To recognize the role of the lead cleanup agency at a federal facility, Superfund, in this case Hanford, and also recognize my agency, EPA, a role at the federal facility sites. And this is going to be a very broad one-on-one presentation. Going further into the details, I'll try to answer the questions after the presentation to the best of my ability. Next slide, please. So what is Superfund? Superfund is the common name for the Comprehensive Environmental Response, the Compensation and Liability Act that was assigned and enacted in 1980. And like I mentioned before, it's also known as CIRCLA. It was implemented via the National Contingency Plan, also known as the NCP. And as the name CIRCLA has in its name for response, it addresses the cleanup of sites contaminated with uncontrolled hazardous substances, giving legal authority to, for the agency, I'm sorry, for the federal government to respond to a release or threat of release to the environment. And some of those response actions can be considered a time-critical and non-time-critical removal action, which are designed to stabilize, oops, sorry, designed to stabilize or clean up a hazardous waste site that poses an immediate threat to human health or the environment. Additionally, another response action can be considered a remedial action. And those are used to respond, used to respond to long-term and chronic releases of hazardous waste. Those are more costly and intended to achieve a permanent solution for risk to human health and the environment. And additionally, there's also an enforcement action, which authorizes the enforcement authorities, in this case, in this case EPA, to obtain settlements or to compel the potentially responsible parties to implement the removal or remedial actions at sites where a release occurred for which the parties are liable. So that addresses the response part of the act. The second act, the second part is that established the Hazardous Substance Trust Fund, otherwise known as the Superfund Tax. And the Superfund Tax authorizes EPA to hold and use funds from settlements from the potentially responsible parties for cleanup and enforcement activities in private sites. And can now be used for federal facilities such as Hanford. And that was reinstated recently, earlier this year on July 1st. And it is currently in effect through December 31st, 2031. And for the last part of the act regarding the Liability Act, there is the, the notion that it provides authority for EPA to impose strict joint and several liabilities to potentially responsible parties, otherwise known as PRPs, or a federal agency. Next slide, please. And so within CIRCLA, there is the National Priorities List. And the National Priorities List, also known as the NPL, is essentially a list of the highest priority sites where releases of hazardous substances have occurred in the United States. And, and that is tabulated by this Hazard Rating System, HRS, which scores a proposed site based on certain factors to determine which sites warrant placement on this listing. And the information that's utilized has come from initial limited investigations, such as preliminary assessments, site inspections. It also incorporates factors, including people or sensitive environments that may be affected, the characteristics of the waste at this proposed site, or the likelihood that the site released or has potential to release hazardous substances. And the listing is not set in any order of priority. So something, if you see the list right now, and there's something at the very top, that doesn't mean it automatically gets the most funding, because there's always another site that has work going on and is utilizing money from that Superfund Trust Fund. So going on to the next slide. This is where we bring in Hanford. So Hanford in particular has four NPL sites, three currently active. The first Superfund, the first NPL site, excuse me, is the 100 area, which are considered the reactive areas, which you can see pretty much along the river corridor. The 200 area, which incorporate the central area, also known as the central plateau. The 300 area, which is further on the southeastern side of the Hanford site, also known as the industrial area. And 1100 area, which is the Horn Rapids landfill and has since been deleted from the NPL. Next slide, please. So taking a step back from Hanford and looking back into CIRCLA, some of the Superfund regulations that apply here with the NPL listings are that all are subject to CIRCLA, the NCP, and the public participation requirements, such as the Hanford Advisory Board, public involvement plans that we had talked about earlier. And in particular, CIRCLA Section 120 is specific to federal facilities. And it is very aptly named as having federal facilities on the title for Section 120. Additionally, the state and tribal governments and the local officials participate in the planning and selection of remedial actions. EPA also has a policy known as the Lead Regulator Policy, which does allow qualified states to supervise cleanups at federal facilities, subject to EPA's approval. And that clarifies the rules and minimizes any overlapping oversight of the cleanup as we have with RICRA and the Washington Department of Ecology. And additionally, there's a particular executive order that I wanted to highlight, which is Executive Order 12580, which delegates the response authorities to the federal agencies for releases at their facilities, giving rise to the term of lead agency. And so as we go to the next slide, the definition for the lead agency is defined by the National Contingency Plan at 40 Code of Federal Regulations 300.5, which states that the lead agency is the agency that provides auditing coordinators and remedial project managers. And in the case of Hanford, it is the Department of Energy, as they are the lead agency for the site under CIRCLA. And so we got to the next slide. And earlier this year, I provided a Hanford TPA cheat sheet that I saved on the Teams page. I'm not entirely sure where on that file folder it is located, but it is there for your reference. And really, it just highlights everything that we have just talked about earlier this morning and right now. But without going into too much of all of that, I wanted to go to the next slide, which focuses just on the TPA cell at the very top. And without be gurgitating too much of what we had just talked about, I did want to highlight that it outlines the mechanisms to integrate the cleanup and the closure under the permit with associated CIRCLA activities, as well as identifies the Department of Energy as the lead agency for the CIRCLA response actions and selective remedy with EPA, and also leads the community involvement activities for Hanford. And DOE is responsible for facilitating and generating the request for cleanup and documentation. And as we have mentioned earlier, EPA and ecology are the lead regulatory agencies for specific areas of cleanups throughout the Hanford site. So then we focus on to the next cell, which is focusing for, which is focused specifically on EPA and the CIRCLA Federal Facilities Agreement that we had just talked about earlier. So that authorizes cleanup of hazardous waste sites. It covers the Hanford NPL sites for the 100, 200, 300, and 1100 areas. As mentioned earlier, Section 120, sorry, CIRCLA Section 120 covers the requirements for the federal facilities at Hanford. And additionally, at the very bottom, I wanted to highlight that EPA retains the final decision-making authorities for remedial actions at Hanford. So while ecology, oops, sorry, yeah, thinking. So while ecology may be the lead regulatory agency for a certain operable unit or for a certain site, ultimately comes down to the Environmental Protection Agency to make that final decision for remedial actions at the site. Next slide, please. So then, shifting gears a little, going to, focusing on the tri-party agreement and CIRCLA as it is right now, some of the passing current CIRCLA documents and remedial actions that are happening are what I've highlighted below, which are the Hanford CIRCLA five-year review, which is issued earlier this calendar year. And within the 100 area, there was the 100 BC Record of Decision that was issued in calendar year 2021, as well as ongoing soil and groundwater cleanup at 100K. In addition, the 300 area, they are continuing towards remedial actions to remove the 30296 soils. And upcoming circular items are things such as the Fast Flux Test Facility Engineering Evaluation and Cost Analysis, otherwise known as ECA. The date for that is still to be determined, but we will let you know when that becomes available for public review. And additionally, projected for fiscal year '24, there's 100K Record of Decision, otherwise known as a ROD. And these are just very broad. There had been many actions done in the past, and actions are still ongoing as well, and that are going to be started on in the near future. Next slide, please. And then, shifting gears again, wanted to give you all a brief overview of the EPA's priorities, not just specific to Hanford, but also to the region as a whole as well. And, and these are not listed in any particular order, they're just listed just for brevity. And starting off with ensuring the protection and completion of cleanup along the Columbia River, continuing groundwater restoration across Hanford, continuing progress with characterization and cleanup of sites in the central plateau, also known as the 200 area. Implementing current TPA schedules and milestones for cleanup, ensuring appropriate levels of public involvement in Hanford decision-making, information sharing, and overall awareness of site activities. And ultimately, and at the end, supporting national EPA efforts on climate change and environmental justice. Next slide, please. And so here, I'd like to provide some basis to the names of the people that I work with and the people that work with DOE and ecology over at the Hanford site. And starting from left, up and down, up and down to the right, we have Craig Cameron, Dave Enin, myself, Jeff Schram, Annie McCartney, and Laura Bulo. And at the bottom, I've listed very high-level work scopes of their responsibilities. Dave Enin is currently our Department of Energy Project Manager Lead. Also, he can be known as a team lead. Annie McCartney, also another RPM, oversees the 300 area and the 200 area. Jeff Schram, he oversees 100 area general, and is also one of the public involvement officers. Craig Cameron, another RPM, oversees the 200 area, as well as Erdis. There's myself, where I oversee 100K, 100DNH. I'm also another public involvement officer known as a PIO. I'm also the region's point of contact when it comes to the National Historic Preservation Act as a new role. And ultimately, Laura Bulo is, as many of you may be aware by now, is our new section manager for the office. Previously, she was one of the RPMs that oversaw 100 BC. But yeah, now she's our section manager, and we're excited. So after that, that's the end of the slide of the presentation. I realize I went through that bradily quickly, and, but I do hope it provides a very general overview of CIRCLA. Any questions?
Three folks in queue, but I want to check in--
Three folks in queue, but I want to check in with Department of Energy if they have other things to add in the CIRCLA realm. Wes?
Um, so I'll just introduce myself again. I'm Wes Boyd. And for those that heard earlier, I've been working for DOE for about an hour longer than last time I discussed it. But most of the CIRCLA work at Hanford is handled by the DOE projects. And they coordinate closely with EPA in the development of mitigative and remedial strategies. And some of the CIRCLA work that we currently have ongoing is the groundwater pump and treat of multiple contamination plumes in several areas, 200 East, 200 West, 100K, 100DNH. We've also got some ongoing solar remediation work at 100K, and we're working towards new records of decision or rods for the 100K and 100N areas. Thanks.
All right. I have Jeff Wyatt, Alfonso, and Richard Bloom in queue. Jeff?
Thank you for the presentation, Roberto. A couple of questions about CIRCLA. The first is, is DOE the sole PRP? And what about DuPont, for example? And then the second question is that the Trust Fund has been reauthorized and funded. Are we looking to get additional funding from the Trust Fund in addition to DOE's budget?
Roberto, could you also help people understand what PRP is?
Yeah, so PRP is a potentially responsible party. And those are entities that are found to be potentially liable for any hazardous waste that was released or is threatened to be released to the environment and endangered to human health or the environment. To address the second question, we are still awaiting further details on the Superfund Tax Fund. Currently, I do not have a whole lot of information on that, aside from the expectations or rather the feedback of where that money can be applied when it comes to the federal facilities, if it comes in the form of bringing in new remedial product managers to help assist in regulatory oversight at the sites, at the federal facility sites. Or if that comes in the form of public involvement or some other aspects that that we're still awaiting to hear back from. And for the first question, well, actually, did that answer your question for the second one?
Yes, except in the past, the Trust Fund has provided funds for cleanup as well as agency involvement. So I guess that remains to be seen. So the first question again was other potentially responsible parties, because DuPont was actually managing the site for many, many years when a lot of these wastes were generated. So are they a PRP?
My understanding, no, is currently the Department of Energy. They are the Lead Agency for this.
Alfonso. Yeah, hug that mic.
Here we go. This past spring, I was at another EPA presentation. It was Back East. And their list that they showed was structured in the way that they did have a most contaminated area and a how would you state? Not necessarily on funding, but on what needed to be cleaned up first. Do you know of such list? Do you? You said yours isn't structured in any way of importance, that it was, they were all just sites. Do you know of this list?
I'm not entirely aware of the list you're talking about. The one I was referring to was the National Parties List. And that one, I don't think it really addresses any of the factors or characteristics that you had mentioned. At least from what I'm aware of.
Okay. I guess what I'm getting at is where does Hanford overall sit on a list? Because you break down by sites at Hanford for your list. Where does Hanford sit for nationwide?
Regarding like the Hazard, the HRS, the score? That, I actually don't know off the top of my head. I'm drawing a blank on that right now. Yeah, unfortunately.
Because when I saw that presentation, Hanford wasn't even on that list, nor any of the sites. And I questioned it there then, too. Why it wasn't, and they couldn't tell me why, or didn't want to tell me why. I guess something I want to get an answer for at some time.
Yeah, of course. And like honestly, it was a fallback on me for not actually including the number of the ranking for Hanford. That should have been something I should have included on the presentation. But yeah, I do appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I have Richard Bloom and Dan Solitz. Richard?
Yes, I got two easy questions. One is, you mentioned that the ECA for the 400 area is coming up. But on your list of project office responsibilities, 400 area is not in there. So who's got the 400 area? And then secondly, is the 400 area part of Central Plateau? The site, the NPL site?
Yeah, the 400 area is currently not listed on the National Parties List.
Right.
So there's, with that being said, we do not have any EPA personnel that is overseeing a 400 area.
Well, you said there was going to 400 area. ECA, is there someone responding in that?
Yeah, no, I was referring to the Fast.
Fast Flux Test Facilities 400 area.
Yeah, that is not considered for us is the 400 area. I believe that falls under the 200 area and also falls under the preview of Craig Cameron.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dan Solitz and then Tom Cecilia. Dan?
It's more of a comment or an observation than something I'm trying to struggle to understand is in an analogous situation is they spent fuel at the reactor sites and the DOE being in violation of their standards contract. And so they're being paid out of the Justice Fund to store that fuel. So because it's a violation of contracts, so I don't know why the Justice Fund doesn't step in and supply the the money needed to bring us up to compliance with the TPA. Perhaps DOE could sell a site, a commercial entity, for a dollar, and then they could sue the Justice Fund.
Tom Cecilia?
Just a clarifying question. The 100K ROD, I found the slide was 2024. Is that the proposed plan or the ROD signed and completed in 2024?
It's projected to be issued, signed and completed by 2024, fiscal year 2024.
All right. Let me do a phone check. We've got 33 people online, so it's a bigger meeting than you can see. Do the folks on the phone have questions? They want to jump in? We've got two people on the phone. All right. I don't have others in queue. Alfonso, do you have another question? Okay, so right. Questions about CIRCLA, our Ecology folks had, were double booked. TPA, things to wrap up this section? Rob?
I'll make a quick comment here in that you said something very confusing about FFTF and the 400 area. So we as site people have always known FFTF is 400 area. We can't go renaming it and calling it 200 area. Okay, so otherwise, we're going to have total confusion. So can you maybe explain a little more detail exactly what you meant by that?
Yeah, I believe that was.
Could you say what the acronym FFP?
FFTF is the Fast Flux Test Facility?
Yeah, so that was a mix-up on my part. I also keep getting them confused. So regarding the 200 area and the Fast Plus Test Facility, yes, those are separate. Yes, that was an error on my part.
Richard?
I'm going to jump in and just clarify. So in your defense, it's all part of, it's considered part of the Central Plateau for Ecology's area designation rather than River Corridor. Correct?
Sorry, I missed the middle part, something about Ecology?
Well, I mean, I mean, it's considered by EPA to be part of, as far as a cleanup, under the Central Plateau region rather than the River Corridor.
Oh, yeah, correct.
Okay, well, that's why the 200 area jumps in. But the Central Plateau is much bigger than just 200 area.
So Roberto, I'm going to put you on the spot. There were a couple of questions before the break about who regulates waste when it's mixed and part of it is dangerous and part of it is radioactive? Can you clarify when there's a bucket of waste and it's got both kinds of components, a RICRA kind of component and a CIRCLA kind of component? Who's on deck to regulate that stuff?
To be frank, I don't know.
Fair enough. Richard, maybe Richard knows.
Well, you've been doing it for few years. If somehow magically you can remove the RICRA issue by permitted treatment, then it becomes only radioactive and then it's DOE's. If it's both continues like the cesium capsules, the cesium capsules are hazardous because the radioactive component decayed into a hazardous material, which is sort of unique. When they were made, they weren't hazardous. But because of the decay, you end up with a T-clip material, and nobody's going to run a T-clip test on the cesium capsules today. They're just going to assume it. So it's regulated in management by Ecology under the RICRA permit. But the real regulation comes into DOE is regulating it as far as DOE and NRC, as far as NDOT, as far as shipment, packaging, and disposal. So it's relatively simple. So mixed waste is always managed by DOE if it's DOE's radioactive waste. It's just Ecology adds on to it. So another.
I have Stephanie from Ecology on the line, so I'm going to go to her and then go to Jan. Stephanie, you want to help clarify?
Sure, I was just going to add on to what Roberto was saying regarding the 400 area and the ECA. I wasn't completely sure myself, so I checked with our project manager. We are lead for that ECA as Rich mentioned, so that's something that we'll work with Craig Cameron on, but Ecology is the lead. And we should be seeing that ECA sounded like later this year. So I just wanted to follow on and provide some clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan?
So, Richard, as long as you're answering some questions. You're talking about cesium and strontium made me think about the Tisker and how in order to have a direct feed low activity waste, you have to take out those radioactive elements. Is that correct? And then there are low-level wastes when they're vitrified so that they can go into the separate storage facility. And then I have a kind of a second part of that question that would probably go to Roberto. We talked a little bit about one of the earlier, in the earlier Ecology presentations about how if there are two different kinds of wastes, then DOE, or rather Ecology and EPA kind of decide which of the two agencies is going to be the Lead Agency, even though we understand that DOE ultimately is responsible for the whole cleanup. So I'm handing you those two thoughts together if you'd like to comment.
I'm not sure what I was handed.
Well, Tisker was part of that.
Okay, Tisker is mixed waste, the residual. I mean, the unique thing, I mean, it's probably argumented, argumentable. But the cesium capsules, whether they're mixed waste or not, it could be argumented. From the standpoint, it became a new product, and that would have removed the listed waste stink on it. But somebody might want to keep the listed waste stink on it.
Yeah, well, I guess.
But the Tisker always, the waste going through it is a listed waste. Once a listed waste, always listed waste until it's delisted.
Right. I'm just thinking about the difference between the the cesium and strontium capsules in WESF, and those are identifiable. They're pure, right? They're going to do something with them. They're high-level waste. But when you do, when you bring in the tank side, tank side removal program, they're working on tank waste, which is mixed waste, right?
Right, well, the cesium capsules are mixed waste.
Oh, but what the Tisker, though, deals with a kind of the
It's also mixed.
aggregate of tank waste and takes out the radioactive elements so that what's remaining can go ahead to vitrification. Is that correct?
Well, it is low activity waste. That's what it's doing. I mean, DOE can jump in, but I'm not.
I fear.
Maybe we'll do this offline.
Yeah, I fear we have gone down a rabbit hole that may leave our new members in acronym confusion. Tisker is Tank Side Cesium Removal. It's part of the treatment process going into the Direct Feed Low Activity Waste Process. WESF is the Waste Encapsulation and Storage Facility that is really key on site. And I fear we're going to generate more confusion about some really important programs on Hanford and not stay at the what the heck is RICRA and Superfund level.
Okay, well, thank you for saying that my question was going down the rabbit hole. But I was trying to clarify some things, and it looks like Wesley has some comment.
I'll just add that when the tank goes through the, through Tisker, through the tank side cesium removal, it's just removing the radioactive cesium. The rest, there's still a lot of other radioactive constituents that stay in that. And part of that is, is you send that over to the melter with the high temperatures that can cause the cesium to volatilize. And so we need to remove that before we can treat it. I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Did you have a piece of your question to go to Roberto as well?
Yeah, I did have a piece of my question that went to Roberto about how mixed waste is. Sometimes there's an agreement that is, you know, reached between Ecology and DOE about who's going to be the Lead Agency for one particular, like operable unit.
So Roberto, when there are multiple pieces and one piece could go to one regulator and the other to the other, how do you decide who the Lead Agency, Lead Regulator is going to be when there are really two parts to it?
Frankly, I'm not too entirely sure of the process. I haven't, personally, I have not really experienced that a whole lot myself. I don't know if anyone from Ecology can also. I don't know if anyone from Ecology can also chime in for that to give a better understanding.
Stephanie, are you still on? Can you help with that?
I am. Can you repeat the question that you're looking for me to try and weigh in on?
Hi, Stephanie, this is Jan. I'm just trying to kind of suss out how, how the decision-making process is for mixed waste when one of the earlier presentations suggested that when you have mixed waste, that EPA and Ecology get together and decide who will be the lead agency, even though it's mixed waste.
So that really, the lead agency piece, when I think about that, I really think more about CIRCLA actions, not so much RICRA actions. Ecology is the lead as delegated by EPA Region 10 for RICRA. So anything that, and I, and I believe we have a list somewhere, but anything that's basically in our, our permit is under RICRA and Ecology is the lead agency for. The Dangerous Waste Regulation specifically call out what is mixed waste. So there's a definition in there about that that says Ecology is the lead for the Dangerous Waste Component. And then, as I think maybe Annette mentioned earlier, for the radioactive piece that's managed under the Atomic Energy Act, the Department of Energy is responsible for that. So whereas we don't regulate the AEA, there are certain circumstances where we have to be flexible about radioactive considerations. It doesn't necessarily go into the permit, but it's something that we have to consider when writing any document. I don't know if I was able to specifically answer your question, Jan. Did I help at all?
Thank you, Stephanie. That, that helps to clarify the issues at hand. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Stephanie. I've got three people in queue. I've got Rob, Rob, and Jacob. So Rob Davis, Rob Parmley, and Jacob. Rob Davis?
I was simply commenting on the, excuse me, the TISCER operation, Annette, that we, people, we, we need to understand that we're just sucking the liquid off the top of the tank. And so in that liquid, cesium is pretty soluble and so we'll be in that liquid. And we run it through a filtered demineralizer setup. So we've got resins on beads, so they're plastic or similar, okay, that attracts that cesium molecule, captures it on the resin, okay? And then once that resin gets full, all the resin beads are at their maximum, then they shut the unit down, they exchange the filters, then they bring in new filters with new resins. The old ones get put into a canister and set out on a concrete pad. That is still not, we still don't have a disposition on all those filter canisters. So, and that's a decision that will be waiting in the future. And that will be mixed waste because you've got combinations of hazardous material and the radioactive. If somebody wants to correct me, I, that's what I gather from my reading. How's that?
So for those of you who want to know more about TISCER and how it works, and this is an ad for the Tank Waste Committee, okay? Because they're really kind of cool presentations. Rob Parmley?
Okay, going, going back to the, the presentation on one page, it says DOE is the lead agency for cleanup at Hanford under CIRCLA. And I think I kind of understand that, that DOE is responsible for overall remediation, I guess. And then on the next page, under Ecology, under the RICRA, it says manages cleanup of hazardous wa, mixed hazardous and mixed waste and in parentheses, parentheses hazardous and radioactive waste, which implies that they are managing or providing regulation for mixed waste when it is radioactive and hazardous. So is, is that, is that true? Is that, because it seems like we keep getting kind of confused on, on what Ecology is regulating and what they are not regulating.
Sorry, I can't hear well. Could you repeat that question again?
Yeah, well, no, the, one slide here, it says here that Ecology manages mixed waste, both hazardous and radioactive waste. And it sounds like there's some confusion on whether they, they are handling the radioactive part of the mixed waste. So do they handle mixed waste when it's, or provide regulation and manage mixed waste when it's both hazardous and radioactive?
Yeah, I'm going to defer mostly, I'm going to defer to Ecology for that, but from my understanding, yes, as it applies under RICRA.
Steph? I don't know what that means.
Sorry.
Stephanie, are you still with us? The, the question is, does Ecology regulate mixed waste when it contains both a hazardous and a radioactive component?
Yes, we do. So dangerous waste is defined under the Dangerous Waste Regulations, as well as mixed waste is defined under the Dangerous Waste Regulations. Mixed waste is waste that has a dangerous waste and a radioactive component. They are defined differently, but Ecology regulates just the dangerous waste component, but they are two different categories of waste. Did that clarify?
So if, if Ecology regulates the dangerous waste component in a mixed waste waste?
We regulate-
Who regulates the radioactive component in a mixed waste waste?
No. We regulate the, so we regulate mixed waste because it has a dangerous waste component.
Okay. Rob, does that help?
Kind of, I guess. So i, if any waste hazard, has a hazardous waste component, whether it has radioactive or it does not, then Ecology is managing that. Is that correct?
Ecology regulates it, yes.
Regulates, well, all right. Okay. I believe.
It might help if we, if we put together definitions. I know, I think we just use the terminology. We can put together definitions and share those to try and provide some clarity, if that would help.
I'm, I'm actually considering like a doodle that has, has the colors and the waste and who does what. All right, we've got a couple, couple more questions, Jacob, and then Jeff. Jacob?
Can you hear me?
There you are.
Yeah, I always have problems unmuting because of multiple types of mute being on. So I want to ask a question, I think for Stephanie, that I, that I think the answer is going to help clarify whether DOE or Ecology or EPA regulate certain things. So it's in the context of something I know about. If you go to the tri-party agreement, Appendix H and Appendix I, one of them tells you when you've removed enough waste out of a single shell tank farm to close it and the other describes how you, how the process to close a tank is. And I don't remember which is which because I interact with them together because they're interrelated. However, in one of those appendices is a flow chart that says there are certain requirements to close a tank farm that you need to meet because the waste was RICRA and it sends you to Department of Ecology to approve certain things and to provide, and for DOE to provide specific plans to them. And some of them have to do with the radioactive aspects of the waste and that sends you to a independent agency that's managed by the Department of Energy, but it's not part of the environmental management which actively runs the site. So that's another part of DOE that judges whether EM does their work correctly. And that, in that appendix, sends you to there to show that you have met your radionuculide type requirements for closure. And so you have two separate agencies that are regulating, both regulating the same waste, but have different questions they need to answer. So I can see that in Appendix H and I. My question is, is, is that the same process for other waste besides closed tank farms like vitrified waste or secondary waste or, or whatever? What I say makes sense?
So I'm wondering if, go ahead, Roberto.
Oh, I was going to say, like, I'm not entirely understanding the question, but Stephanie, you can go ahead.
We, we lost Stephanie. She had to leave for another meeting.
I'm actually, I'm still here. I was hoping to try and answer this question before I have to jump off. But I was, I was wondering if DOE actually wants to answer this because I think the references to the NRC maybe in Appendix H and Appendix I that you might be talking about. And I'm not sure what specific process Department of Energy goes through for the radioactive component and their approvals. So I'm wondering if that's best directed to Department of Energy.
Wes is grabbing his microphone.
Thanks, Stephanie. I'm, I'm going to have to get back to you on that. I, I do know that we do have a process that we go through in order to, to regulate the radioactive waste components, but it's a process that we end up having to go through headquarters and I haven't been intimately familiar or involved with that yet. So I will have to get back on that. I apologize.
Part of the reason we put these presentations in is because it's, it is more complicated than it looks at first glance. Jeff Wyatt?
Thank you. Is DOE, are they, are you interested in reclassifying some of the waste streams on site to make it easier or less expensive to clean them up and dispose of them?
I would say any process that would allow us to be compliant with environmental regulations and that would cost less money, we'd be interested in how feasible that process is. We'd have to, you know, work with EPA and with Ecology on that to, to make sure that that process, that making those changes would be allowed under their regulations.
Is there any activity going on at present in that area?
I do not know of any personally at this point in time, but let me go back and I'll see what I, if I can find, you know, the answer to that.
All right. I don't have any others in queue. We've got about 30 people online and a dozen in the room. Are there final questions on the morning's Regulatory Framework 101? The TPA, RICRA, CIRCLA? Anyone? Right. We're still trying to get the air conditioner turned off in here. Madam Chair, shall we go to the next agenda item?
Well, yes, but also I think that it's important to, you know, express our appreciation for the, the briefings that we got this morning. I'm sorry that Ecology couldn't stay so that they could weigh in on some of these questions that came up on the second half of the morning. But obviously, these are things that could easily move into another meeting where we could have another briefing and, and maybe try to suss out some of the, the, the understanding of, you know, radioactive waste and dangerous waste and so on. So anyway, my, my thanks to all the presenters this morning and the people who tried to answer these questions that are particularly interesting to us on the HAB. So, um, the next thing on the agenda, of course, is the election. And I think that Ruth will be conducting the election because there has to be a call for nominations. But the other issue has to do with not only whether we have quorum, but whether Headquarters has called in, dum, 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 dum. No.
We're all staring at Gary. Gary, can you give us an update and then we will do something after we know that information?
We have never been closer. We have never been further away.
That's so well said. Thank you.
I'll take that as the packet has not yet been signed. Okay, so here, here are the facts as I know them at this moment. We do, in fact, have a quorum per our operating ground rules. However, that doesn't, without the appointment of the incoming members, that doesn't represent everybody at the table. We've got two options and this is the part where you all come to agreement on which option you want to take. One is we could hold the election without the input of our incoming members. For a lot of us, that makes us pretty uncomfortable. The other option, Gary, would you like to explain the other potential option?
Yes. Proactive thought is kind of involved here. And if we lean forward as a board, and, and Mike and Roberto helped me as, as I go through wording here to make sure that I'm correct. As the packet has gone through all of the wickets at Headquarters, we have received no information that anybody would be discluded from appointment. We are just at the point of the packet being on the last doorstep with that person needing to give the go-ahead to sign the, the packet. So what we can do in, in, in the spirit of being proactive is we can look at the packet as being approved unofficially and then everybody is eligible to vote. Everybody is eligible to hold office. And we will vote by email. And then Ruth, you'll need to tell us the email that you want it to go to. That vote will be held, it will be sequestered, will not be released until we receive word that the packet has been formally approved. We had a discussion earlier this morning with DOE, EPA, Ecology, as well as HAB leadership with Chair and Vice Chair. And we have a, an agreement in principle to do that. But before we do anything, obviously, this is something that requires discussion. We are, we, we're in an unusual place where the packet has not been approved and tomorrow at midnight, a lot of folks who have interim appointments, those will expire. So what we're trying to do is lean forward, but stay within regulations of the Federal Advisory Commission Act, Federally Advisory Council Act. So from, from the front table, have, have I reasonably stated the intent so we can open it up for questions?
We, we do have questions. We, we do have questions. As a matter of just how it would work, Lacy would be our lockbox. She would be the only person who knows the election results, as in, she's not gonna tell me either. We would vote in-person for those in the room. On, if you're online, you would send an email directly to Lacy. And a ballot would consist of your name, your seat, and your preference for candidates. And that information would live only with Lacy until the appointment package was approved. She would be the only person who would know. This is a matter of technicalities. We've got three people in queue. Oh, Dan's card went down. Okay, that's why I'm confused. I have Jan Alfonso and Tom Cecilia. Jan?
So I think that there's the advantage of, first of all, we have to do it with a meeting, in a meeting that has quorum. Is that correct? We have to do the election during a meeting that has quorum?
There is an alternate to do it asynchronous by email, but that's a little more complicated.
Oh, okay. So, but the, the thing that you're talking about, which is sending the votes to Lacy, is within the first option.
Right, is within doing it today and then locking up the, the results until the package is approved.
And as a follow-up question to that is that among the people who are online and who are in the room, do we have a quorum, first of all, of people who are already approved?
Yes.
And so if we have the election today to include the people whose approvals are pending, that would be the advantage of doing it with the emails to Lacy because it allows people to vote whose, whose approvals are pending. And that way, more people get to vote.
More people, yes.
So the HAB, which is a consensus board, the, this is the day when it's not consensus. You get to vote, and although there is going to be a call for additional nominees, is that correct?
Correct.
Those are my questions. Thanks.
All right. I've got folks in queue. Alfonso?
How come one of the options isn't to just postpone the election to the following full board meeting? And just extending officers in place till that board meeting?
The, that is an option, yes. The challenge is that the current appointment for the current chair expires on December 31st. And that would mean three weeks in January, we might not have HAB leadership. And postponing it till January is an option. Tom Cecilia?
Yeah, as Jan mentioned, this, the election is one of the few times where we're not providing consensus advice. So I, the problem that we had with quorum in the last meeting was because it was a consensus piece. I, I think I could live with the lockbox idea. I think it's the best path forward because we wouldn't have a chair to start the January board meeting if we don't have an election before then, which is tricky. Question, though, for those who are in the election, could we extend an invite to them to tomorrow's EIC meeting even if they aren't elected, if they're locked, locked in limbo? So, you know, if, if we have some new leadership coming in, they're not coming in blind?
That invitation has been extended and their travel has been approved.
Okay.
Lorene? Oops. There you are.
Yes, good morning. I, I'm a little uncomfortable with, you know, going forward with a vote. And I guess I would support the, you know, like, waiting until maybe December. And hopefully, we do receive the official notifications, you know, that we're all formally appointed and reappointed. I just wanted to get that out there. That's, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Chris Sutton?
Some or all of the committees also have interim chairs. And some of those interim chairs have not been approved yet either. And are, as of tomorrow at midnight or whenever, we are no longer, I guess, approved members. Is there a problem with those committees holding meetings or continuing on if we don't receive approvals by tomorrow and we're interim chairs?
Gary?
Members of the public may be members of committees. And however, members of the public may not be leadership of committees, which means that there would be an issue with some of the folks who are on interim appointments. So it could jeopardize meetings until the packet is formally approved. So that we, we've got multiple things going that we're trying to address until we actually get the packet formally approved. So I hope I answered your question, Chris.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so I've got Richard, Rob, Tom, and Jan. Richard Bloom?
I guess I'll jump in real quick and ask the question. Is, who gets to vote? Is it going to be just the primaries or just the, you, you have to do a vote for your jurisdiction? I mean, we, you know, we have to make sure we know you, you aren't double-voting.
Right. So the, the reason that...
Unfortunately, I have to go.
The, the reason that the ballot is your name, your seat, and, and your preference for candidate is in HAB world, votes are by seat. So if you have a primary and an alternate member for your seat, you only get one vote. So if we collect ballots either in, in paper or via email, the reason we want your name, your seat, and your candidate preference is so that we can double-check if a primary and an alternate vote, that the primaries' vote is the one that gets counted. So votes are by seat. Primary vote is what gets counted unless the primary doesn't vote, and then the alternate vote counts. Does that help? Um, he will... Yeah. He, he can vote by email. And we, okay, and we still have a quorum. Okay. Thank God, somebody's counting. Rob Davis?
I, I vote that we are, I would think that we just gotta get this done. Okay, we've wasted so much time and so many meetings talking about this very issue. And if Gary's got a good workaround and we can do this with Lacy, I'd say, let's do it, let's get it done. Let's now start, change our focus, and now get on to cleaning up the site.
Tom Cecilia?
I, I hear that. I also hear that there's some concern with holding an election only today. So I would say, what if we start the election today and have a deadline to get emails to Lacy by end of December? And hopefully sometime in that window, the packet has been approved and you can, you can lock in your vote. But, you know, get the process started, and then by January, we'll have a, a new chair or, because Jan's turning off.
All right. Jan?
So I have a couple of things. Lorene, I wanted to address your concerns. And I appreciate that, you know, sometimes it would be easier just to say, let's do it after the packets that have been approved. But I think we've waited two months for that. I think we've already waited two months for that. And it has affected our ability to do work. And I think that, therefore, I think that it is, the fact that several people have spoken together to, like, create a plan that provides for people to be elected who are currently on extensions, I think that has value. And that the value is that our next meeting will be in January. Is that correct? And so if we don't have the election, then we might feel uncomfortable conducting any work at all without leadership. So, and that gets to Tom Cecilia's point. There could be, since we just saw Richard Bloom go out the door, who was eligible to vote while he was in the room. But, you know, you have to wonder, well, is he still eligible? But I think that there might be some reasonable, you know, three-day window to vote or something, just to make sure. But to extend it until the end of December, I think, is a lot. And then the other thing that I wanted to say is that, that there is, I think, a sense that the DDFO needs to weigh in on this as a kind of a a legal matter, whether we can actually collect votes, even though we're, we're setting all these provisions on top of it. Because Mr. Birkenbauer is our liaison between this room and Headquarters, the official liaison person. So I'm gonna ask Mike to please weigh in on that.
Yeah, thank you for that opportunity for that. So I would first start out by saying that, thank you, Gary, for the, the thought that you provided this, our opportunity to lean forward with the, the assumption that we, we've had no information coming back from Headquarters that would indicate that anyone in the package is not going to be approved in that package. Also, I'd like to thank Ryan and Roberto for the discussion we had as well. So I'll, I'll comment from the perspective of whether I have a sense that, or I'm aware of that, that anything we're attempting to do leaning forward is, is inappropriate. I do not. I, I don't have a sense that it is. I also have a sense that it's somewhat unprecedented, both in our history and then perhaps other systems advisory boards as well. I have two thoughts. And this more along the lines of what Lorene had suggested, and not to, to walk backward your remarks, Jan. I think they were constructive. If, if we don't do anything, we're looking at doing something in January, and, and that is complicated. If we were to find out in some way that, that this approach was in fact viewed as inappropriate from Headquarters, we're looking at doing something in January. I anticipate that we'll, we'll have an answer very soon, and I think it's the most hopeful that I've been since I've had the opportunity to serve with DDFO and be a participant in this particular aspect of this process. And I, and I would say also that, that if perhaps I'm incorrect in my judgment that allows us to lean forward, you'll probably be looking at having another DDFO as well. So it, I'm comfortable with leaning forward. I think the, the discussion has, has been constructive here. I believe that your leadership, your HAB leadership, is open to further discussion on it. I don't have anything else that I would offer.
Let's check in with Lorene. Help us understand your concern, Lorene.
Well, I just, you know, because of the fact that we're not formally appointed, that just raises a red flag to me and, and a concern. But if we do go ahead and go forward with this, I would, myself, would like to know and have it documented somewhere, you know, where, you know, we have the quorum and identify the individuals that make up the quorum. I'd be comfortable with that.
Okay. We, the, we do have a quorum at this moment based on the direction in the current HAB operating ground rules. And we have, we actually have quorum sheets that my staff fill out, so we, we actually document, like, who counts towards that. The, the process, the proposed process here would be that both currently appointed and anticipated appointed members would vote. Those votes would be kept with Lacy Mancius of the facilitation team and not shared with anybody, including members of the facilitation team. So Lacy becomes a, an embargoed lockbox until such time as the membership package is, is approved. So that would, that would be the process? Does, does that help with some of your concerns, Lorene?
Yeah, I just like to see, because I'm visual, so I just like to see, you know, the proof, like, who are the, who qualifies or who makes, makes up the quorum? Names, a list or something.
Okay, yeah. And we, we, we actually do have that list. Lacy, Lacy's been tracking it the whole time. Rose? Did I see your, your hand?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I just put queue in the chat. So just to pick up on what Lorene is saying here, I guess my question to kind of piggyback on that a little bit is, how many people are required at this moment for quorum? And are you using the attendance of people who have not officially been approved to make up that quorum?
No, quorum is based on the operating ground rules and the MOU. Quorum right now is 16. That's based on the number in the MOU, the number of seats in the MOU, which is 31. And quorum is 50% of 31, which we round up because half a person is awkward. And that's where the number 16 comes from. The 16 that we are counting at this moment are appointed members, currently appointed members. And that's what it's based on right now.
Okay, so you're, you're basing the ability to actually do the vote based on the numbers that, of the, the people that are officially members, I guess is what I should say. Yet you're counting votes of people, you're willing to have people who are not officially members actually vote on this, and you will count those votes? Is that, I just want to make sure I understand what, what we're doing here.
Correct, but votes from members and anticipated members will not be counted or not disclosed until the full membership package has been approved.
Yeah, I got that.
That, that information is, is embargoed until such time as everybody is officially appointed.
Okay, so if you did not have 16, your, if you did not have your 16 members there or at this meeting right now, even though you would have more than that if you looked at the people who weren't officially, you know, who are still in limbo with this packet, would you be doing a vote now or you would not be?
I believe we would do a vote regardless.
Okay. I just, okay, I'm just curious about that because that's, it's, all right. Thank you.
I've got Chris Sutton?
Yeah, Ruth, I'm a little confused now. So I have a letter saying that I'm an interim member until tomorrow. Can I vote today?
Yes.
So everybody else who's in the same, who's in the same boat as I am can vote if they're, if they're a primary.
Yes. Jan?
And, and I just want to reiterate one more time because of Rose's expressed concern. We do have a quorum in this meeting at this moment, or today. And so even though we may include other people who have, would be voting kind of on a provisional basis, and that we would not be... and that we would not be announcing the results until the packets are approved, we're doing this, number one, because we're in a meeting that has been established by quorum, and that we have members who might not be able to vote on a different day. And we want to include the votes of those people who are waiting to have their packets approved, because that would be the most fair way of doing it.
Okay. Tom, before you say whatever just you're going to say, with, we've had a couple of people leave, so we are actually only at 15. So we don't have a quorum at this moment. Tom?
Well, then that's good, because I just wanted to say that we don't need to have quorum to have an election, because we have email. And as long as 50% of the board votes, we can document an asynchronous quorum, as we've called it in the past, where it's out of, you know, not all in one place. I also wanted to make sure that it's clear that each seat only gets one vote. So even if your outgoing member has an interim appointment, and your new member isn't appointed yet, and they both throw in a vote, you would only get counted once. So we wouldn't have any double counting of the overlap.
So Tom, your proposal was not to have a vote in a single day. What if we evolve Gary's proposal to open voting today? We announce it in the weekly update on Thursday? And we close voting on, just on November 30th? The end of the month? So that people have the opportunity to vote via email to Lacy the lockbox? And that only gets opened once the membership packet is approved?
We would have to close nominations today.
We would have to close nominations today, yes, we would. We okay with that? Okay, I'm seeing, I am not, I am not seeing. If you are online and you object, let us know. Otherwise, we will continue with a somewhat unusual, but hopefully transparent process.
Okay, question. What was the cutoff date that was suggested?
So I was suggesting November 30th, the end of the month.
I'm not overly comfortable with going out that far.
Okay.
Because I think we're already stretching things. I recognize that everyone should be given the opportunity to vote. However, everybody also has the opportunity to attend this meeting. And there are many who have not availed themselves that opportunity. I think that if we cut it off Monday, which is the 21st, I would be far more comfortable with that, or even Friday. This is, we're not electing a mayor. We're not electing a senator. We're electing a chairman for an advisory committee. So in my mind, because we've been talking about this and talking about this and talking about this for months, I believe that the board has had plenty of time to digest. And I'm not comfortable with a very long voting period. I think that's really stretching FACA too much. And I like Mike being here, and I like me being here. And so that's, I think we should limit if we do that. My vision was that we would vote and end today, because I am very optimistic that I will know by the end of this week that the packet will be approved.
So Madam Chair, do you want to suggest today? Or do you want to suggest by, Tom, help us out here?
I had a compromise proposal here. If we were to have something go out in the HAB happenings on Thursday and say you have one week, would that be an acceptable compromise, so the 24th? I mean, it's important that we give people a chance, and I understand they could be here, but it doesn't hurt anybody to have a little extra space.
I hear what you're saying, Tom, and I support giving people as many opportunities as possible to vote. And we have, I've, attendance has been a problem. It has been an opportunity for improvement over the past three years. We are averaging about 52% attendance for primary members. And we're at actually 25% attendance for alternates. Given those statistics, I'm not sure if waiting until 2 o'clock for all those extra votes to roll in would make a difference. I would, I'm just put it, I'll just leave it at that.
I have Esteban in queue, and then we need to make a decision. Esteban?
Yes, and I'm with Gary on this one, because I think when we're looking at the calendar, I looked at what was happening and everything. And I think Gary said, I mean, I'm doing some consulting work on a congressional race. I've worked on Georgia Senate runoff. And believe me, this is not a congressional race, this is a board chair. And I knew this was going to happen. I said, nobody's going to show up for this. So if people can make the lease, I mean, people had time. And I think, you know, we wasted enough time on this. I think, you know, I'm with Gary on this, if we can do this by the 21st, because, I mean, people should know better by that now already. I mean, this is not something that people, it's not fresh on their minds.
All right. So if we were to announce it in the weekly update on Thursday and have voting close on Monday, would that be acceptable? Avance, I see your card up.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. The people attending today, online and here, are we the only ones allowed to vote because of the quorum issue? Or do the people that are not here also get to vote?
If we were to put it in the weekly update on Thursday, the people who are not here would be notified that they would be able to vote by a certain deadline. And the question is, is it okay if the deadline is Monday, the 21st of November? Okay. Yeah?
Yeah, I would at least push it off.
To Wednesday? Gary, can you live with Wednesday? It's a day, that's the day before Thanksgiving, translation.
The flip side to that, and I'm hearing all of the discussion, is that what if I get word back tomorrow that the packet is approved? That could have an impact on the election. The choice is the board's. But for me, sooner rather than later, let's get her done.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Friends, let's do this election. I didn't want to do the election without it being announced in the weekly HAB update. And then, like, putting it over until Monday, I think is a reasonable kind of voting period, so that if you feel like there are people that, you know, want to know about the vote and want to cast a vote, we'll have ample time to do it after the Thursday HAB update is published to all the members and prospective members. And trust me, I'm not doing this just because I want to get elected by Monday. But I think that I don't, I think that I don't understand what the advantage is in pushing it out to, you know, 30 days or even seven days, when we could get the ball rolling right now and know by next week who our leadership will be. So I urge you to accept this compromise of having the voting opportunity advertised widely and casting your own votes today or tomorrow. So thank you very much.
All right, Chris, and I'm going to propose, before you go, I'm going to propose that we go till 12:15 to wrap this up, and then slide lunch by 15 minutes. That doesn't, that doesn't screw up the afternoon schedule. Chris?
I agree with Jan. I think we should have the election as soon as possible where we have a quorum.
Okay. So if we announce it on Thursday, and we close elections on Monday, the 21st, at close of business, 5 o'clock? That appointed members and members not yet appointed currently in the packet are all eligible to vote? Voting consists of your name, your seat, and your preference for HAB chair and vice chair. You can cast that vote either in person today on a little slip of paper that Lacy will give you, or send your vote to Lmancius@slind.net. We'll make sure you have that. That's the process. And we will confirm nominations today for chair and vice chair? But not before lunch? No, we're going to do it before lunch. Correct, that's why we're into lunch a little bit. Because I don't want this to hold over after lunch if we don't have to. I'm hearing get on with it in fairly loud terms. Okay, any questions on the process? All right. We have a nomination for chair, we have a nomination for vice chair. We're going to start with chair. Nomination for Sue Coleman as chair, and she has agreed to serve if elected. Are there other nominations for HAB chair at this time? Right now, I only have one nomination. But you are welcome to self-nominate if you so wish to serve. I nominate myself. Right. And you are willing to serve, correct? Okay. The rule says I have to ask that question for anybody who's nominated, so you don't get voluntold. All right, we have two nominations for HAB chair, Sue Coleman and Jan Katrell. Would either of you like to say a word? It's not required. You're good, okay.
So thank you for this opportunity to serve as the chair over the last several months. And I look forward to continuing to serve on the HAB committee with or without your vote.
So when you cast your vote, name, seat, and your preference for chair? Jan or Sue? We have one nomination for vice chair currently, that's Mia Burke. Are there other nominations for vice chair from online or in the room? Others? Got lots of chat going on here. Mia, would you like to say anything?
Yeah. I actually wanted to just talk about who I am, because I've just met most of you. And so you might be wondering why I want to be vice chair. And just starting kind of with my background, I grew up originally in St. Louis, Missouri. And I went to the University of Puget Sound in Tacoma, Washington, got a degree in Spanish language and literature. And then, after graduating, wanted to continue using and improving my Spanish. And so I attended a culinary school for two years in the north of Spain, in the Basque Country. And ended up working at a restaurant in the area for three years. And then needed a change and moved to New Zealand and worked and lived in New Zealand for two years, also in restaurants. And then wanted to be closer to home and closer to family, and so moved back to, actually to Portland, Oregon, and worked at a Japanese restaurant in Portland for three years. And then needed a career shift. And so I went back to school and got a master's in international environmental policy. And then through that program, in my last semester, I did an internship with Columbia Riverkeeper. And that's actually the first time I learned about Hanford. And that internship led me to my position with Hanford Challenge, which I started last October as a program manager. And so I just wanted to say that my personal values, I value humility, honesty, respect, and collaboration. It may not seem like working in kitchens has prepared me for a job working in Hanford, but I would actually beg to differ. I've acquired a lot of leadership skills and experience working as a chef. I have lots of experience working with people from different backgrounds, different perspectives, and different work styles. And I feel like I am able to bridge those differences and really get the job done. And working as a chef also taught me how to be efficient and effective. I learned great communication skills, interpersonal skills, and organizational skills. And so I honestly hadn't considered running for vice chair until I found out I was nominated and Ruth called me. But I'm really honored. And I've had a chance to think more about the role of vice chair. And I'm honestly really excited about the opportunity. And I'm committed to doing work on Hanford. And so I personally think that I bring a fresh perspective and new energy to the HAB. And my experience as a chef has prepared me for this leadership position. So just wanted to share a little bit about myself. I know I'm not running against anyone, I guess, from what I've heard so far. But it's just nice to have a chance to get to know each other better.
Mia, I failed to tell you that there are some culinary traditions in HAB leadership. Gary?
Yeah, I think that what you need to do is demonstrate some of your culinary experience. And so, yeah, show us what you can do.
One of our past HAB chairs was known for bringing homemade things to board meetings. That is not a requirement of HAB leadership, but you follow in good footsteps. All right. So I promised to get you out of here before 12:15. We have two nominees for HAB chair, Jan Katrell and Sue Coleman. We have one nominee for HAB vice chair, Mia Burke. Cast your vote in person with Lacy, or you can email it to Lmancius@slind.net. We will announce it in the Thursday weekly update. Voting will close at 5:00 PM on Monday, November 21st. Mike?
Thank you, Ruth. Just for my identification, how many people are in the room and online total?
Online, 24. In the room, 3, 6, 9, 11.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, what we did was we had 15 minutes after lunch for the election results, which are delayed. So, let's take lunch until 1:45. Be back in here and you will, I will regale you with how the hab does consensus. I'm something active before I regale you with hab consensus. Burn furniture for heat. Well, okay, I think that would get me arrested. But, okay, 1:45. Thank you for sticking with it this morning. Um, go warm up.
Any restaurants with a fireplace?
Okay. Okay. So, for, as we gather, I will remind you, if you are with us online, we mute everything over the lunch hour, which means if you are joining us online, you are muted. Um, when we get to any Q and A, you will have to unmute yourself using the microphone icon in Teams. If you are one of our two people on the phone, you unmute your phone with star six. If you are in the room, there's the button on your microphone. If the light is red, it's live. If the light is off, it's not. So, we are the last bit of gathering. And, um, as a reminder, the meeting is being recorded. After the meeting, there's a little post-production on the recordings and they are posted on the hanford.gov website. If you look under outreach and Hanford Advisory Board, you can find all the materials from both board meetings and committee meetings, um, including the recording and including all the presentation slides. So if there's a diagram you fell in love with or something you want to double check, the slides for the presentations are also posted online. So. All right. I think, are we ready to reconvene?
Uh, yes. So, the election is underway. So, everybody gets to vote between now and Monday uh, by sending, by either dropping off your vote with Lacy or by, um, putting the vote in the email to Lacy. And she will do the massage to see how the, um, how the quorum comes out and whether there are one or two seats voting, two people voting per seat. So, for this afternoon, we are starting with your part of the consensus, right? And then we talk about, um, two or three different items under the, um, auspices of Chris Sutton, who is the interim chair of the Budget and Contract Committee. And you can tell from my voice that I'm suffering from being in this cold room. And it's not, I'm not the only person who's having trouble with being in this room. And so we are kind of, um, cobbled together. An idea for us to adjourn early today because of the, because of the temperature of the room. And Chris has kindly agreed to curtail his discussions for this afternoon for one part of three. I won't presage that for you. He can tell you himself later on. But, um, so that we can adjourn early and then reconvene tomorrow over at Ecology for the meetings that are scheduled for that. So, um, I don't know if it takes any discussion or not, but, um, otherwise Ruth is beginning with the discussion of consensus.
All right. So. I'll shorten this up, too. Um, I was asked to do a quick overview of consensus and how we do consensus here at the hab. So I want to start with decision-making in general. And there's a relationship between the degree of participation in a decision. Imagine the top, bottom left is zero and it goes higher and higher. And the degree of support you get for a decision. So if a lot of people participate in the decision, you tend to get more agreement on the decision or support for the decision. And so the middle line here is time. This is the booger bear, right? So if you have a leader who just decides on the decision, there's not a lot of participation in it. And there may or may not be a lot of buy-in for it, but it goes really quick. Right? And as you move up into various forms of voting, um, a leader gets advice, so there's more people in on it. Um, there's a small group that makes a decision. Maybe there's a majority vote or a supermajority vote. But by the time you get into consensus land, you can have a high degree of participation. You can have a high degree of support for the decision. And guess what? It's going to take more time. Welcome to the hab. So, the good news is consensus can give you very robust decisions. The bad news is it takes longer. So when you're looking at consensus, um, every group that operates by consensus needs to define what consensus is for that group. This is not an engineering definition. I've had FACA groups, Federal Advisory Committee Act groups, who defined consensus as unanimity. I can tell you that was a really long process. So if you imagine a spectrum from total opposition, over my dead body, I'm gonna fight you on one hand, and total unanimity on the other. Everything just to the right of total opposition can often be considered consensus or what Hans Biker calls informed consent. Everything from, oh, okay, I can live with it, to, well, I know it's important to you, so I'll abstain and you can do it, but I'm really not crazy about it. So for the hab, what's it mean for us? In your resource binder that you got, hopefully last month, um, there's an operational ground rules tab. And on page four, you're going to see something called decision-making. It's about four or five paragraphs. That's, that's our touchstone. Every seat on the hab has a voice in the consensus. Now, if you have alternates, this means it's important for you to check with your alternate to make sure that the views you're bringing to the hab represent the views of the organization you're representing. So, um, we, we, and we expect that. If you're representing a city, a county, an organization, um, you're representing the needs and the interests of that organization. And it's incumbent upon everybody in the room to communicate the level of consensus achieved. So, if there is a consensus and somebody abstained, that's, it's important to note those things and not blow through them. So, in, on page four of the operating ground rules, it defines four level, or three levels of hab consensus. There's unanimity. Sometimes that actually happens. More common is all board members are willing to live with something. They aren't all crazy about it and they aren't all opposed. Hey, we can live with it, it's okay. Um, there's also consensus when one or more board members have dissent, but they don't want to block the consensus. So they understand that for the total group, the consensus is important, but they, they want to abstain, they want to stand back from it. That doesn't block consensus. And yes, we're going to talk about what happens when you don't agree. Now, I want to pop up a little bit. A simplified version of consensus that I use with all my groups is I understand it. I can live with it and I will support it. If you are missing one of those elements, bad stuff will happen when we leave the room. You don't agree to anything you don't understand. So, in the next four slides, I'm going to walk through what actually goes through my head when I'm helping you get to consensus. It's a flow chart in four pages. First part, I understand it. What's the proposal? Do you understand the proposal? If you understand it, we go into, do you have concerns about the proposal? If you don't understand it, we go into, what questions do you have? And how can we help you understand this thing that's before you? When you're in hab land and you're dealing with draft advice, sometimes there are technical pieces to the advice. And understanding what you are recommending is important. If we don't pass this one, the other two steps don't matter. Step two, there's a couple of checks for consensus. And actually, I, I think of it as three steps. Consensus check one. Is there anything in here that you can't live with? If the proposal is fine, you got to go on. But if there are concerns, this is where consensus is different than voting. Because if they're, if we voted, it'd be up, down, majority wins. We rarely do that at the hab. We do have a voting protocol, but we usually don't use it unless we're electing leadership. Um, the consensus says, I'm worried about this, I have concerns about that. And it forces the group to look at, how can we address those concerns? And that's consensus check one. What are those concerns that we need to address to make this better? Consensus check two is are we in agreement? We've talked through concerns, we've talked through questions, we still understand the proposal. But if you're not in agreement, you go back and you can modify a proposal. You can develop broad support and document concerns. Um, there is a provision for minority and majority reports when you do advice. I agree with this, but I'm still worried about how much it's going to cost. So when you finally are in agreement, everybody's to the right of over my dead body. Then, do we have consensus? If so, you document it and you move on. Um, typically hab products, well, advice is the most common hab product. It's not the only hab product, but they're documented. Whether it's in meeting minutes, whether it's in draft advice, whether it's in a flow chart, we document consensus and we document the level of consensus. So, um, is it a consensus of the group? Was there an abstention? Is there a minority report? It's really important to have that clear. Yeah, so what if there's not agreement? It does happen. The first thing that can happen is the board sends it back to committee. The work's not done. There was a recent piece of advice. It spent a year bouncing between the hab and the committee before it passed. So you send it back to committee, the issue manager team works on it. Um, and usually they have some direction about concerns and things to address. If there are small number of concerns, um, usually draft advice comes to the board on day one. You've noticed that board meetings span two days. If there are only some minor concerns, there's often a team of people that will work overnight and they'll try to fix those things overnight. So for small things, the, the mini IM team works overnight and you see it on day two. And hopefully those things are revised to your satisfaction. Individual seats can abstain from consensus. That happened last month with the work plan. Um, state of Oregon abstained from the consensus, but let the consensus stand. So the work plan was adopted. And if it's, if it's really dicey, we can do majority and minority reports. Um, it's pretty rare. Um, but we do have provisions of that in our operating ground rules. So, the point is there are levels of hab consensus. It doesn't have to be unanimous, but it has to be willing to live with. Don't agree to anything you don't understand. I understand it, I can live with it, and I will support it. And that third one matters. Don't say in here that you can live with it and then badmouth it out there. Consensus means you were in agreement. And we characterize that agreement accurately. That's our commitment to each other. What questions do you have about how the hab does consensus? Oh my gosh, I put him to sleep. Yes?
Um, one of the, I don't know if it's an option, but, um, is there ever a point when consensus just doesn't happen? And that the, and the advice, like, let's say we're talking about advice, it just can't go forward because we can't reach consensus? Because that wasn't on the list? But, um, like, if it keeps going back into the issue manager team, they keep changing it, but there's still people who can't get on board, who can't live with it? Then does it just die?
Yeah, so in that case, the consensus would never happen. Um, there have been instances where the board recognized that on an issue, the board was not going to come to agreement. Like, absolutely not. And in that case, um, I'm actually thinking of the Fast Flux test facility. Um, and, and years ago, there was a question as to whether that reactor was going to be restarted. Right? Lots of different opinions about that and, and very passionately held opinions. The board wanted to weigh in. There's no way they're doing advice. So what we did was we did a sounding board. And a sounding board is just a round robin. And so the commitment was we would transcribe what people said. Everybody got, I think it was two minutes. And we went around the room and everybody got to say whatever their two minutes were on how they felt about FFTF. And we transcribed it and the chair wrote a cover letter and said, agencies, we care about this issue, but we don't agree on it. This is what we think. So there was a, a process to give input to the agencies that was not consensus, but did express the opinions around the table. And I was really proud of the board that day because the opinions were very diverse. Other questions? Tom?
Just building on that concept, um, there's, often if, if there's something that has a quick turnaround and we don't have time to go through the whole consensus process, we'll, we'll put together, you know, a, a storm board or something where, um, the, it's, it's in the meeting minutes, it's on record that these are the opinions. Um, but even, uh, above that, I've been looking at advice 262, which was one Pam brought up earlier on Rev 9. There's a consensus couple pages. And then there's, after that, there's a big watermark that says, this is not consensus. Um, and so there's an additional appendix that's everyone else's opinions that, it's not a minority report, it's just other stuff that was floating around that was important to say that didn't have consensus. So there, even in the same document, you could have multiple levels.
So it goes back to, we characterize the level of agreement that exists. Um, so it's, it's okay to say, well, we didn't agree on this stuff, but it's still important kind of in the big picture. Okay. We, I, I know that we want to, we want to keep moving because people, I don't mind, go.
And, um, Ruth has been talking about real world consensus building. And, you know, I have some, some sense of how that happens as well. One thing that happens is that the piece of advice that's being proposed does not go forward until it's approved by the IM team. And then the IM team goes to the committee that is the, you know, the team of people, the committee of people. And the, the piece of advice has to be kind of agreed on by consensus in the committee before it goes to the full board. And that means that by the time it gets to the full board, the people on the IM team and the people on the committees have already had their say. And so they're really not supposed to raise objections at that point. And so when you bring it to the full board, you're actually bringing it for consensus. And so when you bring it to the full board, you're actually bringing it for consensus to the people who have not been working on it all along. And so in a way, you're only editing it to increase the consensus and the agreement among the people who haven't been working on it. So as it moves up the pyramid, fewer and fewer people are involved. But that last day, when you have the first reading of the piece of advice and the overnight work when you edit it, that's what it is. It's incorporating everyone else's opinions. And so it can go forward with everyone's consent, everyone's understanding. And it isn't, you know, a free for all, it isn't a melee.
Jeff? Oh, Dan Solitz, sorry, peripher vision.
Thank you. I wonder, Ruth, if you could talk a little bit about how consensus also works in the planning process and putting together agendas and defining questions and that sort of thing? Because I think it does bleed over. I think it's a good thing that it does, but I think a discussion of it would be helpful.
So, oh, sorry, Chris, I got things out of order. So when we do agendas for either the full board or committees, there is a group of six people of six elements that need to come together to make this work, right? So you've got the chair and the vice chair of the committee, so either the committee or the full board. You've got somebody from each of the three TPA agencies, so that gets you to five. And then you get somebody from the facilitation team because somebody needs to write it down. And that collaboration is a combination of the committee's interests and key questions they're asking, as well as availability of the staff on the three TPA agencies. Are they available? In some cases, as work is progressing, there are better times than others to talk about certain topics. And the agencies bring that knowledge to the table. And then the facilitation team putting in the experience of, well, how long does it take to talk through some of these things? And knowing some of your desires and passions about, this isn't a short conversation versus maybe it is. So agendas really require six people to come together to make it work. Because if it's only one or two of us, we'll miss something. Y'all want to add anything to that? Yeah, Mike?
So one of the responsibilities I have is the approval of all of the meeting agendas, each of the meeting agendas. And so I really rely on that collaborative effort, sausage making, if you will, to prepare those agendas. And so when they get to me as DDFO, that's the question I'll be asking is, what extent were they collaborated on? And it's evident quite clearly in the late stages of agenda development, whether or not we're aligned or not. And if they're not, I haven't hesitated to say, yeah, I'm not going to approve it until we work through what those details are. So that's part of the process, too.
Chris?
I want to add just a little bit more to what Jan said. When an IM team presents advice to its respective committee, its respective committee, and that committee agrees consensually to forward that advice on to the board, that committee chair may also elect to present that advice at other committee meetings for discussion before the board meeting finally discusses it and agrees to it or not agrees to it. So there's another step that could go on in order to inform the members more fully about the advice on other committees before they see it for the first time at a board meeting.
Other questions, comments, clarifications?
I'll add, it's important when you get your board meeting packet and meeting invite and agenda that you read through everything that's attached to it. So it's not, so you're not seeing a piece of advice the first day of the meeting. You've actually had a chance to digest it. If you're an alternate in the primary, you've had a chance to talk through the issues that your seat has with the advice before you get to day one and you're looking at it on the screen for the first time and trying to edit it in real time.
One of the group dynamics things that happens, particularly with draft advice, is the issue manager team has worked through issues and what ifs and done research. The committee has usually peppered the issue manager team with questions about what if and did you think about? And that takes some time. When it comes to the full board meeting, one of the things that needs to happen to do it in a reasonable amount of time is the people on the board who haven't been a part of that process actually have to go through that intellectual process, the same as the issue manager team and the committee did. Only the board is doing it faster. So sometimes you will feel frustrated because you're like, I was on this issue manager team and we did our research and we thought about it. And then we went through the committee and we had to answer all those questions. And the board is asking the same questions we answered last week at the committee meeting. That will happen. Because bringing people along and helping them get up to speed on why this advice is important, what are the issues, what are the ramifications? And so as you come out of committee and you present things to the board, being as clear as possible about the issues and the whys and the what ifs will help people go, oh, yeah, that makes sense. But the board, at the board level, we do it faster because the work of the committee and the issue manager team has happened. But there are people who will ask those questions that you guys dealt with six months ago. And then there's the wordsmithing that will, if you don't have patience now, you will by the time you end up working on the HAB. Because there is some wordsmithing involved and sometimes that's the least lovable part of us. Other questions? Did I shave any time off? No. Madam Chair, why don't we move on?
Okay, so thanks, Ruth, for consensus 101. That'll be a good touchstone when we get to that point. But probably some of the first advice that may be tackled is the budget advice. That's an annual kind of ritual. And Chris Sutton, who is the interim chair of the Budget and Contracts Committee, has put together a kind of a HAB budget advice 101. And he has it in three parts or four parts, I'm not really sure. But he says that for today, he can condense this down to one so that we will adjourn early. And so I'll turn it over to you, Chris, so that you can maybe touch on all four of the topics and then tell us about the one topic that you need for us to learn about today.
Thanks, Jan. Each year, in years past, the Budget and Contracts Committee has sponsored an IM team to put together a work priority, cleanup work priority advice for work to be performed by DOE two years in advance of the time the IM team is formed. So we are going to put together advice for cleanup work to be performed in 2025. Now, why 2025? Well, because that fits the budget cycle. And DOE will put together its work that they want to perform in 2025. They will send it to the Environmental Management Office in Washington, DC, and then to the Office of Management and Budget in late spring. So we want to put together our priorities for work to be done in 2025 so that DOE can decide whether to incorporate that advice in their work plans for 2025 and go upward to EM and then to the Office of Management and Budget. That's why 2020-25. Now, one of the pieces, one of the items that we use for input is DOE's five-year plan. In the not-too-distant past, DOE discussed their latest five-year plan, 2023 through 2027. And in that plan, they had what work was going to be performed. So we will look at that work. We can say, yes, we agree with it, we partially agree with it, would like you to do this other work instead, or, or, or. One of the things that we will do as an IM team and decide is, what do we really want this work advice to contain? What's the strategy? What are the issues, as has already been said? Agree on that and then go forward with actually writing the advice, send it up to BCC and then onward. But the 2023 to 2027 work plan is at least a starting point that we'll use for our advice. Because it gives us input as to what DOE thinks is important. Also, in the surrounding years, 2024 and 2026, we take a look at that. Because again, that gives us input as to what DOE thinks is important. And we can take that into consideration as well. One of the things, as has been discussed at a number of meetings, the more input you get to advice, the better that advice is going to be. The more diverse input we get, the better the advice is going to be. So I think one of the things that we really want to get, really need, is diverse input. To that end, at least as a starting point, I asked members of the Budget and Contracts Committee, if they sent any comments into DOE on that five-year plan, if they could also send me those comments, I could compile it. And that might be a starting point for advice. I got four sets of comments in, I compiled it, there were 36 comments altogether. And that's a starting point. When we finalize IM team, I'll send that out. But I'm asking, I'm asking members of the HAB, if you have anything that you think is important for this IM team to consider or comments that you sent into DOE, please send that to me at my email address or send it to the facilitation team to forward to me. Because we'd really like that kind of input as we formulate how we want to develop this advice. Now, the IM team to date consists of these members. Myself, Denise Jones, Dan Solitz, Tom Galioto, Steve Anderson, Maxwell Wood, Tom Cecilia, and Mia Burke. If anybody else in the HAB would like to be a member of this IM team, please let me know as soon as you can or the facilitation team know. Because we'd like to get started on developing this advice. We need, we value input. The more input we get, the better we'll be. But the sooner we get that input and the sooner we formulate the IM team, the sooner we can get started. Because late spring is actually not far off when you look at where the committee meetings and where the board meetings are going to be. We're going to have to do a lot of work as an IM team in order to meet kind of a late spring deadline where our advice may be valuable to DOE for their 2025 work plans. So that's all I have to say right now. But please, if you'd like to be on this IM team, you'll learn an awful lot about what goes on at Hanford. You'll learn a little bit about the budgeting cycle at DOE. Learn a little bit about finances and funding and how that fits in. So it's a good introduction to work at Hanford, cleanup priorities at Hanford. And especially if you're new, this will be good for you. And it'll be a learning opportunity for you. And if you have any comments, please let me know.
Tom?
Just a question, what's the timeline? And when do you anticipate the IM team will be meeting virtually or probably virtually? And when do we want to get the advice through?
Well, it partially depends on when we're approved. Because I'm sort of on interim approval status, which ends tomorrow at midnight. And I ask Gary, am I officially a team leader anymore after tomorrow at midnight if there's not approval? And the answer is no. But we'll have to go on. So my thinking is, as soon as I know what the IM team is, I'll send out a bunch of, and depending where this goes with our approvals, I'll send out a lot of material on email, put some of it in Teams for people to read so that we can just have the universal material to think about. And then I'll call a first IM team meeting to strategize. The way Tom has done it in the past, and he's taken those discussions from the first IM team meeting, and he's written the draft advice for a universe of input. And I think I'd probably follow that same advice, put out a draft advice, write it myself, knowing that it's just draft and everybody can chop it to pieces. And then we can discuss it in the second IM team meeting. Thereafter, we should be able to finalize something, move upward to the BCC. But since almost everybody on the IM team is on the BCC, that shouldn't be an onerous, it shouldn't be a lot more after that before we move onward. As soon as I know what the IM team is, I'll put out a schedule. And I'll need to talk to Gary a little bit about IM team meetings and support for those. But I'll put out a schedule, let everybody knows what it is. And one, hopefully, we can meet a late spring deadline so that DOE can use whatever advice we come up with or not, depending on what the advice is.
And as part of that, I will commit to clearing my calendar as best as I can to support this effort.
Tom, do you have anything you want to add based on you having shared, been responsible for the advice for the last few years?
I think you've covered it really well, Chris. The only thing I'd mention is that I think the target in the late spring is the HAB meeting in April for approval, review and approval by the full HAB. So that's really the focus of getting it to DOE in time to potentially impact the budgets in the middle.
Questions for Chris? Jeff?
Hi, Chris. Just a general question, forgive my ignorance, but do we have access to the detailed work breakdown structures that they use to produce the cost estimates? These are usually put together probably by contractors like Bechtel and then get rolled up. Can we see those?
Yes. At least the top two levels of the work breakdown structure are available publicly. And that's one of the things that I had planned to make available in information that I would send out to IM team members. Going down many, many more levels, I don't think that's really available publicly, not for any bad reasons, just because it becomes extremely voluminous and complicated as you get down to, as a branch of that, it's pretty complex. But for the top levels, that's available and I can make it available to all the IM team members, certainly.
One of the things we do using Microsoft Teams, which is the platform we use for the board, is each issue manager team has its own workspace in the HAB Teams account. So when you sign up for an IM team, we add you to that group. So IM teams are nested under the committees that sponsor them. And so that's where the documents, drafts, those things get posted. They're not open to all the full board members, not because we don't want that. It's just a function of the software. We have to consciously tag you with whatever committee or IM team you are on. So letting us know which ones you need access to, it's an easy, easy add. Dan?
On the other side of that is, you have to set up your browser, your computer to get notification that something's been posted on your particular IM team. And that's not always an easy process. And I'm just curious, how many people now are getting notices of messages left on your groups from team? I'm getting them, but it took I'm, I'm getting them, but it took me three weeks. Yeah, that's not a lot of people.
If, if you want them and you're having difficulty, let us know at the facilitation team, we can help you fix that.
Lacy's a big help to me getting that going.
My computer talks to me a lot. Other questions for Chris on the cleanup priorities advice? There's something unique about the cleanup priorities advice, it used to be called budget advice, is it's probably the one piece of advice this board has done every year for 26, seven, eight years. It is one of the consistent pieces of advice that this group has done.
Jan, was that your plan for, for budget? Oh.
My plan comes together on the fly. But I just wanted to assure Chris that just, that you have more to, you know, brief us on having to do with budget advice. And we hope to make that a part of the agenda in January so that you can still do what you have planned to do. But just due to the, you know, inhospitable kind of environment that we're in today, won't keep us from hearing what you have to tell us about the budget advice. And I know that there are people who want to participate in it. And I certainly do appreciate Gary's willingness to make himself available for those kinds of virtual or online meetings where a person from the, from DOE needs to be present. So, you know, that's a big change to his, to his schedules as well and we appreciate that commitment. So we hope that we can move along with your planning for the budget advice and your IM team and encourage people who want to participate in this from the ground floor to, you know, submit your name for that because, like I say, it's something that goes on annually and you can only build on what you participate in. So I'm encouraging you to do that. So other than that, we'll think about, who else has questions?
Tom, Chris, and Rob. Tom?
One thing that we didn't mention earlier when Chris was speaking was an additional input to the budget advice, cleanup priorities advice, is the public meeting that DOE holds each spring. Because that, at that point, DOE is summarizing the high points of the, their cleanup plans. And that, that really is a, is a window into what has gotten ultimately into the budget submittal that they're going to make in, in May or June. So in, in light of that, I wonder if Gary or Mike can answer or if you know when the plan is for having that public meeting? Because the advice is now, as we mentioned, targeted for April to get to you. When that public meeting occurs is kind of important, too.
Yeah, I do not have a historical or forward-looking perspective on that, Gary?
Unknown at this time, but we will let everybody know so that we can get maximum participation.
Chris?
Yeah, and we can certainly look at when it appeared last year and that'll give us some idea of when it'll appear this year. Actually, I forgot what I was originally going to say, so let's move on.
Rob?
My question doesn't really have anything to do with the budget, but something that you just mentioned about, for any of these committee meetings that you have on, on Teams, are there certain meetings that DOE needs to be involved in?
The, the way the Federal Advisory Committee Act works is that any meeting of the board, whether it's the full board, a committee, or a subcommittee, which we call subcommittees, IM teams, there needs to be one of the federal officials there. That usually falls to Gary or Mike. So we, we don't meet without a federal representative.
Okay. No, I was just curious. I never even thought about that. And so Lacy can help with getting us the right Teams access and, and, good, I'll be talking to you.
Richard?
I just wanted to correct that statement. We do meet when there's wine involved.
We still haven't figured out how to do a virtual wine list.
Well, they have wine in the kiosk right there by the cash registers. I volunteered during break and I was told no. One more thing. Today's Tuesday. If people who would like to be on IM team, let me or the facilitation team know by this Friday, that would be very good. Because the longer uncertainty goes out, the longer it takes to plan and to, and to get material to members. So this Friday, put that as maybe a deadline, that would be really good.
Tom and then Jeff. Tom?
Is there anyone on the IM team that is not in the packet right now that could volunteer maybe as a interim IM team lead? So if the packets don't get approved, we can still have the meeting? Is there any, actually, that's a, I guess that's a question for facilitation. Is there anyone on the IM team that is not in the packet right now?
Gary, help me with that. Tom, yeah, Cecilia's in, on interim status.
I might be, but I have every faith in DOE that they're going to have this approved tomorrow.
Write that down, Gary. Write that down, Gary. Jeff?
Chris, you can add me to the IM team. And could we get some guidance on what we're supposed to do with this?
Anything you would like.
If you rub them together, they make fire.
There, there are some people who need, who need to keep their hands busy in meetings and that's just to facilitate that, that bit of squirminess. Or the fact that no one will let me have a pen that clicks because I'm one of those Chris, are you still up?
Last chance before we have to leave. All right, well, thanks to everyone.
One more. He caught you.
Sorry, I didn't realize we were wrapping up the meeting. Is that where you're headed here?
You know, we're kind of trying to get out of the room because it's so frigid cold.
Okay. I do have one question. It's unrelated to what we've talked about, but clearly related to the HAB and DOE. Can I ask that now?
Oh, please do.
Okay, I guess mainly this is to Gary and Mike again. During the 19th, 20th October HAB meeting, we had several presentations and it was announced there to the HAB formally by DOE presenters that the low-activity waste melter had a problem with the controller and it was, had been cooled down from its initial startup heat up. But that the problem was apparently in the controller, in the instrument panel and not affecting the system. Since that time, I've done two things. One is I've looked on the hanford.gov website for an update and I haven't seen one. It may be there, but I haven't seen it. And secondly, I've heard from someone that has worked or is working on the project in general, informally, that, that the problem goes well beyond the controller and it may actually have damaged the melter itself. I wonder if DOE can comment or provide a status of that very important piece of equipment.
So I'll say that I've, I've not heard that the problem goes beyond the control panel. In the meetings that I sit in as part of my normal work that is not affiliated with the HAB, that information has not been carried forward. I do not know if we have status, melter progress on our website.
Continuing to work to get to the solution. So I have nothing to add to what my kids.
Yeah, Tom, I'd be happy to reach out and inquire.
It's very help, it'll be very helpful to get that information.
Yeah, I'll take that. Actually, you bet.
Thank you.
Rebecca?
Yeah, since we're wrapping up, I wanted to share with you guys, we, the HSEP committee took the tour at the 324 building last week, was it last week? I don't know, I haven't slept since then, but I think it was last week. Anyway, today's CPC Co. Connections. You guys are all big stars who showed up to the 324 building mock-up. So if you're interested in seeing the article or the pictures, I brought it from work today. So anyway.
It also appears on the Hanford site Facebook page as well.
Okay, I've got Pam and then Dan Solitz. Pam?
Hi, I had to leave this morning just a little bit early for a doctor's appointment. So after lunch, you mentioned that people are to vote on leadership. Do we have any others besides Jan and Susan that have indicated an interest in the chair and vice chair positions?
So the nominees for chair are Susan Coleman and Jan Cottrell. The nominee for vice chair is Mia Burke and she is running on a post.
Okay, wow. Surprised.
Dan?
Yes, Rebecca, I just wanted to ask, how many people were on the tour? How many people went?
Fewer than 12.
Thanks.
And thank you very much, Rebecca. It was very informative. I enjoyed it very much.
Rob?
Yeah, I'll just bring up again, this is what Chris was really talking about. This is in our, our library, right? People can access the five-year plan. This is the five-year plan presentation we had. This is what Chris is going to base, or the IM team's going to base a lot of its work on, objectives in here. Right?
Yes.
Yes. Correct. So, yeah. So for the people that are joining the IM team, let's make sure you look at this five-year plan they've already put out for us. That's right. You probably were going to talk about it, but yeah, that's what I figured.
Tom, are you still up?
So that five-year plan that, that Rob pulled up is kind of the basis. It shows what they're planning to do for the next five years. And even though they don't have dollar amounts on there, the way Chris was talking about being able to look out in the future to what the priorities are for DOE and the cleanup, this placemat, it's called the, you know, five-year placemat, is the, really the best and most condensed version of the direction that DOE is going. So it's important for people to have that document and I would advocate for it to be widely available.
Richard?
Just one, not, not to suggest that we sit here and freeze for another hour, but, but we did have public comment period scheduled for 3:45. Obviously, I don't think Tom is going to comment, but the question goes down to is I don't know how we handle that, that's all.
Thank you, Richard. We may be gone by then.
Can we leave the Teams meeting open until then?
Well, that's what I'm thinking, just leave the Teams meeting open in case somebody wants to make a comment. I don't, does that mean?
But for us, we will adjourn, right? Yeah. Any other comments?
I can, I can leave the Teams meeting open while we're, we're breaking down and make sure that, that someone monitors it.
That's nice. Excellent. And then, since the meeting is recorded, if somebody made public comment, we'd be sure to capture it, right?
Right, right. We'll just leave, leave the computers on.
Yeah, that's great. So we had some very good, informative briefings today, all part of really getting to, getting familiarized with the culture and mores of the HAB. And we're sorry that Chris has got curtailed, but we know that we'll get it later on. So enjoy the rest of your afternoon. The meeting is adjourned.
Hey, quick question. Where are we supposed to put our ballots? And do we get an I voted sticker?